Um, I believe he's, I think he's division chief now. Just say chief, you can't go wrong. Chief.
Okay, what's this?
Everybody's waiting for the call to meet. Where's your gavel?
It's over here inside this thing.
You got it?
I need to sign it. Oh, okay.
No, I didn't sign it either. Oh, we're not passing that out, it's just being signed.
He's here.
Oh, he's here, okay.
You need to sign it.
Okay. Bear with us while we hunt for the gavel.
Oh, it's like a, like a Brad, excuse me. Oh.
He walked up. Bill? Could have a police event here, Lieutenant Gunsel. We may have to file a claim. This would be very embarrassing if the city loses its gavel.
This has never happened before.
Is it good, we've lost? Okay, well. I call this meeting of the Villa Park C Council together. Jared, you want to do the roll?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilman Mills.
Here.
Councilwoman Polly.
Here.
Councilman Reese.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem, Fasten Mili.
President.
Mayor Burnett.
President. Okay, how about Chief Concepcion, do you want to lead us in the pledge?
Sure.
Great. Well, he should have been Tom.
To our greatest, you know, greatest civil freedom in the, in the world. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Well, it looks like we've got a distinguished visitor. We've got Supervisor Todd Spitzer from the 3rd District. And it looks like we've got you set up front to, to move on and get you back to your busy schedule is what it looks like to me. So, welcome and podium's all yours.
Well, thank you very much, Mayor. How, it's really good to see you. Although I see you so often out there, Orange County Fire Authority. So it's such an honor. I'm gonna, I'm gonna fly through, I have, I have some slides, Mr. Mayor and members of the council, and to your city manager and staff, and also to our sworn personnel, fire and Sheriff's Department. So, I, I kinda want to get into this, but I'm sure you're gonna have some questions because a lot has been going on, as you, as you well know, on major issues affecting your city and the county of Orange. And so I want to make sure that I, I leave enough time if you do have any questions. So, my very first slide though is, I, I want to talk about former Mayor Bill McAulney just for a moment. I know that you will be paying appropriate tribute to Bill, but I just wanted to talk about Bill just really quickly because I served for many, many years alongside with Bill. And he was just such a distinguished man and I just, I know that he will be in our prayers and his family and Gwen will also be. But I just wanted to comment something just starting these comments, Mr. Mayor and council, and that is that Bill did not support me when I ran for county supervisor in 1996. And it took, it took many, many years for us to establish a relationship. But when he was diagnosed with cancer, I had been diagnosed with cancer. For, for me, it's been almost five years. And so just through having that shared affliction of that disease, it really brought us closer together. And at the end of the day, part of my message here tonight is that it's really an honor to serve our community and I know we're all very proud to do that. But we have to have our health and we have to have our faith and we have to have our family. And so I, I just want to make sure we always put that in perspective as we reflect on Bill and his life. So, I, I just really could not come here tonight and not talk about Bill McAulney. So, may he rest in peace. On the next slide, I just wanted to refresh your memory. I know the council's familiar with the supervisory district, but in case the viewers are not or people who are here tonight in the audience, the district starts in the north, it includes your Belinda, Anaheim, west of East Anaheim, Anaheim Hills, all the city of Orange, all of your city of Villa Park, all the city of Tustin, and then the entire city of Irvine except for south of the 405 Shady Canyon. And then it includes all the unincorporated areas, Silverado, Majeska, and the canyons. And so, Mayor, you, obviously you and I serve on the fire authority together and the unincorporated area is the area that, you know, I, I, I watch very, very closely because of the services there. I'm, I'm their sole representative for that purpose. I, I want to talk about, in the next slide, a conference that I put together with United Way this year and the Association of Orange County Cities. We have not really come together as a county and talked about what our priorities are as a county. We talk obviously as individual cities, but what do we stand for as a county? And so the United Way came out with a study of the areas that it will be focusing on through its philanthropy. And we are using those as a starting place to talk about our priorities as a county. And so I think it's a very, very important dialogue. I, 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 I hope you will participate in that ongoing conversation. But as the United Way continues to move forward in its charitable efforts here in Orange County, I wanted to make sure that we're talking about what our priorities are as elected officials. So I invite you to participate at any time. The next slide, this really couldn't be more timely. Unfortunately, you know, we have seen our share of significant violence here in Orange County. And with what happened, which, you know, these events are just really unexplainable. And so with what happened in Santa Barbara in the last couple of days, and the loss of very young people's lives and everybody trying to second guess how it happened and if we could have prevented it. We had our own conversation here in Orange County with the Christopher Dorner situation, former LAPD officer. And he started his rampage in, in the city of Irvine. And of course, he ended that, that was ended for him in Big Bear, just south of Big Bear off Highway 38. Then of course, we had the Ali Said situation, the gentleman that lived in south Orange County and came all the way up here and went through Tustin. And, and, and right here, just, you know, not too far from here, that event didn't, you know, terminated. So, the question that, you know, the Orange County Register called today the county because we passed Laura's Law just a few weeks ago. We're the second county in California to pass Laura's Law, but the first large county to pass it. And so basically, it's not forced treatment for, for those who are suffering from mental health affliction. But it is voluntary and it is a way to get people's attention, say for example, who have mental issues, serious mental issues. But they, for example, may refuse to take their medication or seek help. We're not forcing medication, but we're trying this as a first significant way to intervene. And so I'll go to the next slide because I want to talk about a couple of community forums, I had to address this issue. And what we found out at the first community forum in April is that one of the major precursors to violence in our community is coming from young men who are lonely, who don't have a lot of social networks and tend to spend way too much time or a lot of time playing violent video games. And so that makes you ponder as a community and something I think we need to think about because we are all in the community and I think we're the best first line of defense to individuals who may be profiling a problem. And I think we all need to kind of come together to think about that. I don't think it's a coincidence, although it's largely speculation on my part, that the young college student in Santa Barbara who went on a massacre several days ago, his father was the assistant producer of The Hunger Games and The Hunger Games is a movie about young people killing people and being rewarded for it as a country. And so you really have to think about that. I'm not saying it means anything, but I heard that talked about on talk radio today and I thought it was fascinating actually, especially in light of what we know about people's role models are in our community. So it's just things to talk about, it's not, it's, there's no, there's no right or wrong answer at this point. But we do have to start thinking about it as a society. So the next slide, we had a bullying conference because we're having serious problems in our schools with bullying and there's been a lot of attention on bullying. And we've heard some very, very difficult stories here in our community of young people have been bullied because they don't fit in or they might be different. And, and I thought that was a very, very productive discussion. The next slide is a countywide summit we had on driving under the influence. You know, we don't have a lot to be proud of about DUI. If you go to the next slide, we are, we have the second highest rate of driving under the influence of alcohol that is resulting in severe injuries or death. We're above the state average. We are above Riverside and we're just below San Diego, but we're second in the state. Even Los Angeles is lower than we are per capita. So, it is a very, very serious issue and we had a countywide discussion about it and we're focusing on that too. In the next slide, we decided to take community indicators. You may be familiar that the county puts out a community indicator report where it tracks various issues that we are concerned about in our community. And so we added DUI as now a new community indicator and we'll be tracking it. We'll be tracking its impact especially on the conditions of family and children because it can make a big, big difference. The next slide, I kinda had a major, I guess in political parlance, you could consider it a major failure. I brought forward a social host ordinance that was not approved by the Board of Supervisors. There's eight cities in Orange County that currently have what's called a social host ordinance. And that's where an individual who sponsors underage drinkers at their home can be, be investigated. And it didn't go off too well with my colleagues at the Board of Supervisors, but it, it, it is something that is seen as a best practice by those in law enforcement, so I thought it was worth a try. But it, it is in eight cities and the county did not adopt it. And it has to be adopted city by city pursuant to your own local ordinance. And I was simply trying to pass it for the county of Orange, the unincorporated, but it didn't pass. The next is GPS, this is another major issue. You may have read in the paper, two convicted sex offenders who cut off their GPS, went to Las Vegas, they were apprehended and then of course, they were put back on GPS. And they went and killed, allegedly killed four women who they believe, the authorities believe, were engaged in prostitution. And so those two individuals are in custody and they've been, they've been charged with four murders. That, that was the murder, they found one young woman at the recycling, the waste facility just off the 91 in, when they were sorting the waste. And the reason I bring this up is because the county of Orange uses GPS in a very, very significant way. I fought the battle when I was in the state legislature to try to stop the legislature from shifting state prisoners back to our county jails and releasing them into our streets. And what's happening now is instead of custody, we are using GPS bracelets. And everybody thinks that that's the solution because if you're on a bracelet, then you're, everybody's safe. And I'm just using this as an example with this most recent arrest and then our own example in Orange County. We had to replace our vendor, a company called Sentinel. And LA County just replaced them because they were being paid to monitor those who should be in our county jail, but they were not monitoring them. They had a lot of individuals who had absconded and they failed to report it to the authorities. LA just canceled their contract with Sentinel. And then in the paper I just read the other day, that one of Sentinel's employees is being prosecuted for embezzling $2 million. So, it has a serious problem, but again, I just, I'm bringing this up tonight because I want people to understand that we have to be forever diligent. GPS is not the answer to an alternative to incarceration for most people. The next slide is to just highlight what we're doing in terms of transportation. I don't have a laser pointer, but if you look at the 55 just adjacent to Villa Park, between the 91 and the 22, we are now getting ready to start major improvements there and then pursuant to the $1 billion for Measure M improvements on the 55. And then we'll be doing the improvements between the 22 and 405 in the second phase. The environmental starts in 2017. So, you will probably get a lot of complaints about improvements on the 55, but in the long run, it's going to make a significant difference for mobility. The next slide just shows you when these projects are gonna start, I already covered that. The next slide is our county budget. Our budget is actually down from 5.6 to 5.3, excuse me, down to 5.3. But I do want to emphasize that, you know, we, we lost a lot of money in our lawsuit against the state of California. We were in litigation under the vehicle license fee. Many jurisdictions lost their redevelopment and you know that Governor Brown has really been on a crusade to take as much money from local government as possible. And so the county lost $78 million. We litigated that and we lost. So, it, it's, it's a nice way of saying we're in a world of hurt. And as we negotiate contracts, and I'm sure you have questions, like animal control and sheriff's patrol, you're gonna see a lot of shifting of costs because the stress on the county budget, especially pensions, which I'm sure you want to talk about, the mayor, you and I talk about that a lot at the Orange County Fire Authority. The next slide. I, I'm very proud of the fact that the county's credit rating has been raised, it, it has gone up. And you'll be surprised to hear that our bankruptcy debt that we floated in 1994 will be fully paid off in about a year and a half. So, as you know, the landfills were leveraged, our fees for trash. We were importing trash and using our landfill fees to pay off bankruptcy debt. So we're gonna get past that and that's very, very exciting. The next slide, you all know that the actuarial assumptions change and so all the pension numbers are changing because the actuarials changed. But in November, I sponsored legislation to put Measure B on the ballot with supervisor win. And that reduces, actually this measure changes our, this was 2012 Measure B. This changed supervisors only, not all the other countywide electeds. From 2.7 at 55 to 1.62 at 65, which is much more in line with where our pensions need to be. So in the next slide, on your ballot, you will see, if you haven't already voted absentee, I have, Measure A will require every county elected official to go to the 1.6 rate. And so we're changing that by vote, so it can only be changed by the vote of the people. And so every candidate who's running for office this November on the countywide ballot knows and has noticed and will be impacted if this passes in November. There's no no-no position, I cannot imagine it won't pass. The next slide, labor negotiations. This is what you're very, very concerned about because of your sheriff's contract. We are requiring our employee groups to pay 100% of their retirement. So for the sheriff's contract, that raises 40 million new dollars that our deputy sheriffs would be paying towards their pension. So it's, these are big, big numbers, but the days of the employer paying the employee's share are over. And we're requiring all of our employees to pick up 100%. So you, you probably read, we're at impasse with our attorneys. We, the board voted 5-0 to go to impasse. We could not reach agreement with our attorneys, they sued us, they won. And so now we're in negotiations, they won at the per board. And we settled with our big employee group, but we're now at impasse with the deputy sheriffs. So we start mediation, a mediator was actually hired yesterday, I think it had to be, couldn't be yesterday. Was hired last week, but, or, or today. And so there's been an agreed upon negotiator and so we're going to, we are in impasse. I'm just gonna fly through the next slides and thank you so much for your being so kind to me and your time. But assessment appeals, people are very, very frustrated that the assessor values their property at a rate that they do not believe their property is worth. And so if you go to the next slide, we get, I'm sorry, can you go back one, I messed up. We get 20,000 appeals a year. And we set hearings for those appeals and people don't show up. So we start a new system that you get a card in the mail with the date for your appeal and you have to return that card if you still want to exercise your right to appeal. We have no problem with you appealing, but the, there's a lot of work that has to go in to justifying the rate for your property taxes and we don't want to spend that time if the person changes their mind. And they change their mind a lot. So, I'm just gonna go clerk recorder. I was gonna highlight some things a clerk recorder has done, but I'm just gonna fly through the next slide. We had some major issues with our last clerk recorder. He bought a building with some funds that were earmarked only for his shop by state law and that building turned out to be a white elephant and we really can't do anything with that building. So we've got to deal with that. The next slide, we appointed a new clerk recorder, Hugh Nguyen. And he is, he's been a real reformer and a real champion, so I'm really excited about that. 24, working together. We'll go to the next slide. And so I am prepared, I have the latest figures, I think you're getting a presentation tonight on animal control. But if you have any questions or you'd like me to talk about animal control, I'm happy to do that, Mr. Mayor. And I also can give you some perspective on the sheriff's contract. So thank you very, very much.
Thank you. Appreciate all the time, any council members have any inquiries?
No. No question.
Oh, no, of course we do.
I gotta let you off the hook.
Absolutely not, Todd, are you serious? I'm really glad you're here, actually, and your briefing was great, many of those things. We, we tend to be pretty well locked in, this council does, with reading the paper and stay up to date on many of those things. One of the concerns I had about Laura's Law, and maybe you can help me understand it, is that once you look at the estimated number of individuals who are going to access that help, help.
120.
Yes, and the amount of money that's going to be, you know, earmarked or directed toward that. That's like $50,000 per.
33,000 a patient.
Thirty-three? That seems like an awful lot of money per patient, doesn't it?
It's a big number, we don't know exactly what the number will be. I know that you, you're, you are of the philosophy, if I, if I told you that that wasn't county money, it's Prop 63 money, you would say it's all taxpayer money, right?
You're right, that's what I say.
So the color of money is irrelevant, the fact is it's all taxpayer money. And I, I agree with you on that. We're, 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 you know, we're in a really difficult situation when it comes to mental health. If we want to lock up everybody who shows indications of mental disease, the price is obviously gonna be skyrocketing, be a lot more than 33,000. I'm not sure it's gonna end up being 33,000, but I'll tell you this, this is where the money goes. It's not just for mental health. Every time the government indicates to a person that you will have to go to court, they are automatically under the law entitled to public defender. So we have to pay for indigent counsel. So that's, the attorneys right off the top represent the, the client or the patient. Then you have to have another courtroom just to handle that caseload. And then the district attorneys off, or social services and healthcare have to come in because they're the ones that bring the charges. And so you have a lot of lawyers and a lot of resources because it's about due process. One of the things that I don't talk about a lot publicly, but I did when it came to Laura's Law, is that my cousin, Patsy, is a twin, she's a little older than me, so she's probably almost 60. But she was a twin and she is schizophrenic. And when I was living with my Uncle Rick in Berkeley when I was going to law school, she was always in trouble. You know, she lived on her own, but she was always getting arrested, always hurting people, always doing things like throwing coffee on people, and she was in and out of the criminal justice system. And she didn't, you know, she wasn't seriously violent, but she needed help. And she refused to take medication because she was schizophrenic. And she thought people were trying to kill her or somehow control her mind because she didn't think rationally. So I am watching it very, very carefully and we've got to get a handle on the dollars. But what I want you to appreciate is, we could do nothing or we could start somewhere and see if we can whittle the costs down. But I am in the camp that we as a society have got to get a handle on our mental health problems with our, because we have people who apparently are not getting the care they need. But I don't think that's a substitute for our general societal observations. I think we all know people, we all know, and I know it's very, it is, it is shown by the literature, young teenage boys who are antisocial are more probable, more likely than not, to engage in some kind of aberrant behavior. And so it doesn't mean that that's always gonna happen, of course, but it's something that you need to pay attention to. And so I ask parents and family and all that to pay attention to those young men. Because we, it's those young men that act out. And if you spend any time looking at the games that they're playing on Xbox and other things like Call of Duty, it is very violent. So, I can just tell you I'm watching it.
We, we could debate this situation.
I know.
I've watched you all debate it. I, I know we all have real concerns about what's happening with negotiations with the sheriff's contract. You and I actually discussed this briefly a week ago Monday. My concern, our concern as a contract city is that we are at your mercy. So when you are negotiating these things, you're negotiating not just on behalf of the county, but those of us who each budget cycle are waiting for Michelle to tell us. When we were discussing this, you indicated to me that you were under the impression that our contract for the coming year was going to remain flat and in fact, we are facing a 5.66% increase. That's $65,000. For us, that's a lot of money. I noticed that the county's paying 21% of your budget goes towards public protection. That's what I saw on your slide that you just showed us. We are currently paying 30% of our budget toward law enforcement and it has gone up steadily. You know, it'll be maybe only 1% or 2%, but it continues to go up and we're not getting any more services for that. And beyond that, you know, when I first got on the council, we were only paying like 1 point, not even 1.1 million for our sheriff's contract. And each year I've watched it ratchet up, what's before us tonight is, you know, quite a bit more than that. But I also remember watching the, the largest measure of that is salary and benefits, of course. And there used to be a time where, you know, benefits was, you know, inching up, it was gonna be almost half of what salary. And then I remember last year it was, oh my gosh, half is salary, half is benefits in our, you know, our overall contract. This year, for the first time ever, salary is 400,000 and benefits is 45,000. So now we're seeing that, that what we're paying in benefits to our sheriff's department is actually outstripping what we're paying for salary, we're getting no additional budget for that. You know, we're no additional services for that. So, so my biggest concern is that when you're negotiating, especially some of the reports I've been reading from the Orange County, you know, the Voice of OC, we've all read those reports and most of the council members read that, where they're seeing that things are maybe happening in the back room that, you know, are not working out in the best interest of the taxpayers and the contract cities, is that you remember we are at your mercy and while you're looking at the people that you're negotiating for, we need a little of that mercy too.
Sure. I appreciate that. I'm not sure, I'll just refresh your memory, when I ran for supervisor and won in 1996.
I just remember the last time you won.
Right, I got that. I represented all the contract cities in South County, east of the 5, so Mission Viejo, Lake Forest, Cota de Caza. So I was, I am very, very aware and sensitive to the contract city issue. You are at 1.162 million now for your contract. It's a led, well, it's, you're being, I think your budget is 1.2 point, 1.2 and change million, which is the 5.6 or almost 66,000. And you have no more services, four patrol units, 80 hours, and then a halftime investigator.
Correct.
So, the goal is to drive down the cost because the pension costs, like you articulated, is what is driving this budget out of control. And the numbers are somewhere in the 65 cents per dollar range for pension. So, until and unless the employees pick up the largesse of that share of their own employee, you know, pension because they're gonna benefit from that in the future, then the system is gonna remain incredibly imbalanced. But I, I want to caveat something because I think it's fair, and you mentioned those articles. I am now, not now, I've always been a supporter of Coin, Costa Mesa has negotiating public. Everybody in this business who has an agenda is gonna say whatever they're gonna say that ends up in the Voice of OC or other places. My attitude is, we should just be negotiating all these contracts in public.
Absolutely.
Because at the end of the day, if you have to put your offer, if you have to go into closed session and come out of closed session and disclose your offer, one of the things that was not happening, even in Costa Mesa, is something called a supposal. And a supposal is a hypothetical, suppose we offered you, fill in the blank, and Costa Mesa wasn't disclosing those and yet they've been shooting back and forth suposals for the last four months. And so the public even thinks that they're getting full disclosure in places like Costa Mesa and in fact, they are not. So, if we're really gonna explain to people and really shine a light on collective bargaining, in my opinion, it's gonna slow the process down, but it will help immensely making things accountable. And then that way, there'll be no misunderstanding. In fact, part of the problem is, you go into closed sessions, you know, because we all go into closed sessions, and you hear something and you get that point of view. And then everybody starts calling you on the phone and tells you after the offer gets, well... everybody starts calling you on the phone and tells you after the offer gets, well, you didn't understand this, or staff didn't tell you this, or, and my attitude is, for goodness sakes, let's just all talk about that in public, so we don't walk away from the table with any misunderstandings. That's where things are really slowing down. It's everybody saying you didn't understand, and it, it's very, very frustrating to me. But you do know that I am very supportive of law enforcement, and I don't, I'm not apologetic, uh, about it, I've been attacked in my career for it, um, and I believe very, very strongly in our sworn law enforcement personnel and our firefighters. Are things imbalanced? Absolutely. Do we need to require the sworn personnel to pay a greater share of their pension? Hundred percent, absolutely. But do not think for a second, I don't wanna walk out of these chambers and have you believe that I'm not trying to make sure that we continue to have the finest law enforcement here, because I worked for LAPD as a sworn police officer for ten years, and I do not want what happened in Los Angeles with the sheriff's department and LAPD to happen in Orange County. So, we have to balance fiscally, but I'm very concerned about retaining law enforcement and recruiting the best. I do not want to jeopardize the best law enforcement firefighters we have here in Orange County. You wanna talk about animal control real quick, and then the mayor can kick me out of here?
We absolutely wanna talk about animal control, because-
You know, Todd, I, I just, I am just gonna make one comment on that. Anyone who takes a thorough look at where our society's going and at the current government, and particularly the safety personnel pensions, specifically the defined benefit plans, it will become abundantly clear after some research that those plans are not sustainable, and it really doesn't matter whether you allocate the money between the employees or the government agency. The, the bottom line dollars that are required to maintain those type of systems are, are not available, they are not sustainable, so you can play this game of back and forth between the staff and the government. The reality is that every time you could, if you continue to entertain those plans, you continue to, to commit the public to writing an open check. They, they have no idea what the future rates of return are gonna be on the money, they don't know how much these people are gonna earn when they retire, they don't know when they're gonna retire, they don't know how old they're gonna, what they're gonna live to, I, I have experts, virtual geniuses that think fifty years from now, people won't be dying, and I know people will go crazy and argue all of that, but the practical reality is that life expectancies are soaring, and they're gonna go up exponentially in the future. It is unsustainable to continue those defined benefit plans. You and I've, I've been through this with the Fire Authority so many times, I'm sick of saying it, but since you've gone through this in my own venue here, I'll bring it up. The system is, is unsustainable, and the only way you're gonna fix that system is to go to Sacramento and change the laws regarding the implementation of defined benefit plans, because just as with the Fire Authority, and I've spent so much time trying to deal with those issues, every time I turn the corner, I realize that the, that the police and fire and safety personnel, government employee lobbies have gone to Sacramento way ahead of the elected officials that roam in and out of office all the time, with their experts, and they have lobbied legislation through to cut off virtually every avenue of trying to reduce those costs. It's almost impossible at Fire Authority to maintain the cost. Not only have we lost control of Fire Authority through the union contracts and management, but the defined benefit plans are virtually committed, and it's the same thing here. I, I spoke with, uh, I was at a bankruptcy conference last week, and I spoke with, um, uh, one of the council for, uh, for CalPERS in the, uh, in the bankruptcy litigation cases. And as I understand it, and some others, I, prior to that, I spoke to some of the judges involved in those cases, and, for example, when they calculate the, the earnings on those funds to decide how much the city needs to pay and what it's really gonna cost us to pay for those employees, they were using seven, seven-five, now they're down to seven and a quarter, seven and a half percent earnings. If they don't get those earnings, the cost of the plan goes up, and they, they subsequently retroactively assess the cities and, and all the, the employing agencies, which is what's happening. Um, if you try and bail out of those plans, then they assess, then they assess you a cost, uh, a present value cost, so to speak, to get out of those plans. And the number that I heard that had last been used was a one point two percent discount rate. In other words, if you stay in the plan, we'll, we'll say that it's gonna earn five times as much, we'll credit five times as much for gonna stay in the plan, um, so that we hold your costs down while the deficit, in fact, accrues, that you're gonna have to face later. Whereas you wanna get out of the plan, not have any further liability, and bail out, pay your ticket now and clear your city, you might get a one point two percent discount, which means it's gonna cost you, you know, whatever that number is, five times, it's probably not that amount, as much money to get out. So, in other words, if you wanna face reality and you wanna buy out now and be clear, then it's gonna cost you multiple times more than it will to stay in and accrue the deficit uh, and, and pay later. Uh, I tried even getting the, the, uh, to, to consider a scenario where the existing people stayed in their, stayed in their plans, and the new groups were paid on a contribution plan, where we didn't stick the public with all this expense. And interestingly, I found that not only are there some legal problems in doing that, but in addition, budget-wise, if you take those new people out and you pay them a defined contribution plan where they just get the money put into a plan on a certain dollar amount, and then, and then the government's done and we're not committing the taxpayer, interestingly, that doesn't leave enough money to cover the existing people that are already in the accrued defined benefit plan, which means that we are stealing from our youth, we're stealing their retirement to fund old accruals. And, you know, I, and I'm not gonna beat this to death, but until you get together with your, uh, fellow supervisors and perhaps spend some of the lobbying money, which I'm sure the county has, to start lobbying the state to make changes to stop that plan, it isn't gonna happen, so-
Well, you know, the board, thank you, Mayor, the Board of Supervisors in Orange County sued on that issue and lost.
Yes.
So, th- there was a serious investment to try to bring some sanity to the unfunded mandates and the system, and the courts ruled against the County of Orange.
You just made my point.
Right.
You just made my point. They ruled against the County of Orange because the system has lobbied so much legislation to support those programs into Sacramento that the county has limited control, just does the Fire Authority and the city have very limited control. You wanna make a change, it's not gonna be in the courts, unless you go to the bankruptcy courts. That change could have to be lobbied through in Sacramento, and I would be interested to know how much of the lobbying budget for the county is being expended to lobby the state legislature to change the laws that resulted in that loss, and other related laws. That's what has to be done, and that's what the Fire Authority ought to be doing. And I don't wanna beat this up, we've got so many other items, but if anybody else has anything, um, be my guest, otherwise, I think we've spent-
No, we need to talk about animal control.
I just wanted to make one comment about the retirement age. I mean, obviously, the, uh, life expectancy's going up dramatically since we've all been alive, since we're all born in the fifties or sixties, and that has changed dramatically. It doesn't make any sense when people are liv- are retiring at sixty-five or purportedly. I mean, your, your working life goes into your seventies now, and for, for a, uh, anybody retired at fifty, a three percent is ridiculous, when they're still able-bodied, especially when they also take out a disability at the same time, which compounds everything dramatically. I, I just don't know, it's, it's, it's a very rough, rough, uh, situation, I realize, but I did wanna make that a point.
Yeah, Councilmembers, thank you for that. In the old days, I don't know how old, but going back, uh, the actuaries, there was an argument that firefighters and police suffered more, from more ailments because of the stress and the danger of the job. Um, there are obviously some afflictions, um, cancer, certain types of cancer for firefighters because they're exposed to terribly hazardous materials during fires, um, but police officers are not dying at these younger ages like they used to, um, or the actuaries are not proving that out. So, for me, having been in law enforcement, excuse me, I can tell you, I worked patrol for ten years, right? But I was much younger, and I would never, at my age now, wanna work patrol, 'cause I don't wanna chase people, and it's harder to get in and out of the car with twenty pounds around your waist. That's for, that's for young men and women, younger men and women to do. But my brain and everything else, I'd be a great investigator, I'd be a great detective, putting cases together, but, so, we should be trying to keep those individuals in the system at a, at, at a much longer period of time. Fifty years old, to me, is not realistic anymore.
I have one question, Todd, do you know if the county is spending any money, do you know what the county's lobbying budget is?
I'm not sure off the top of my head, I mean, we spend a lot of money on lobbying, for sure.
Okay, yeah.
But, but, but I just wanna, and I know this, um, we don't, all night, but, Orange County is not exactly, um, the most influential political body in Sacramento.
Really?
And so, what you have to do in a situation like this, because so many jurisdictions are facing the exact same stockton and other places, you have to be smart enough to build the consortiums, to make these arguments collectively. And so, I think Sacramento, I think I would submit to you that they're paying attention to this, but they are generally beholden to groups that have a lot more sway and influence than we do.
Do you know if we spend, or if the county spends any money lobbying to eliminate the defined benefit plans?
It is, given the lawsuit, I, I'm, I believe it's not part of our platform because we tried that and lost, and so, it is part of the California Association of Counties, uh, which we belong to, the county supervisors, and the urban counties, because we're all facing that situation. I know whatever now, now, the League of Cities, California League, although a lot of us participate in the Association of Cities, uh, Orange County, a different organization that is, uh, that left this League of Cities, um, but Matt Kate is running the Association of Counties, he used to be the head of the prison system under Governor Schwarzenegger, and I know it's top priority. So, we're always looking for opportunities, but we, I don't, we're not, we're not throwing money, you know, after, you know, wasting money. We also don't get to play on the same playing field that, uh, public employees get to play, uh, as, as, as government agencies. We don't play in the same sandbox. Um, we could lobby all day long, and that's not, uh, how you get your influence.
You know, here's an interesting statistic just, Fred, in, in the Cal Watchdog, there's an article, says the average death rate in two thousand eleven for the general American worker was three point five for one hundred, hundred thousand workers, and two point five per one hundred thousand workers for firefighters.
Right.
So, two-thirds better longevity than the general average American worker.
I know the table, and I think Steve Green had put that table together for Cal Watchdog. If I, I believe, because I just looked at that table, it's very persuasive.
I think if you wanted to have a, a community forum on something, maybe this would be a good issue to have it on, 'cause there's clearly enough information. Uh, we, we are going to be dealing with animal control issue later on in tonight's agenda. You and I have also talked briefly about this. We understand that they had, uh, identified a one point four million dollar deficit, and that it came before the Board of Supervisors to determine how they were best going to deal with this, and on a three-one vote, decided to pass an eight percent increase to cover the additional six hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars that they couldn't cover?
Not yet.
Okay, good, well, I just would like to reiterate, uh, first of all, for our city to suddenly get slammed-
Right.
-with this ridiculous fee that's requiring a budget adjustment, it was just a, a shocking number that came down to us, and then to find out that, uh, the answer at the county level is to charge more money for those who are the law-abiding citizens who are paying, in fact, a tax for the privilege of having a pet, when only forty-seven percent, and those are the county's figures, forty-seven percent of pet owners actually pay that tax. And so, what you are effectively going to do, if this does go through, is you are going to punish the law-abiding citizen further. And my, I was actually more excited about the original, uh, there were several proposals that were before the county, uh, and one of those was to figure out how to cut, if you've got a deficit, cut.
Right.
They were talking about getting rid of one person, and there were a couple of things that they were going to do to try to-
We could close one day, we're open seven days a week.
And, and instead of, instead of figuring out how to reduce the amount of money that's expended, the answer was to fill the hole by coming after the taxpayer. Now, tonight, we're gonna be looking at options for what we're going to do, because we have to take action on this, uh, and it may mean that there will be a number of cities that leave animal control. My other question, because this, these are a number of questions, how, how you plan to deal with this situation, is that they're, they're also looking at building a new shelter, twenty-five to thirty million dollars for a new animal shelter at the-
At Tustin.
Yes. Um, is that part of the reason why we're going to have to pay more money? I, I just feel like, you know, the county needs to figure out how to cut sometimes instead of how to gouge additionally, and particularly when you're going after those who are already abiding by the law, so, I was wondering what your position is on that and where you see this thing heading.
Um, thank you for that question, Councilwoman Polly. Um, let me just tell the status. So, the county staff came with a whole, uh, smorgasbord of fee increases, and I, I couldn't support that. And you and I talked, and your rationale that you articulated to me is absolutely right. In other words, we, we don't even have fifty percent of people who register their dog or cat, and so, the SCUF laws are benefiting from not paying. And then the county said, well, we're charging twenty dollars for a pet license on an annual basis, and probably some of your constituents have had animal control or a third-party vendor come knock on their door, I mean, I had my dog license that, I was only like four months into it of the whole year, and they were already knocking at my door to renew, I'm like, that, it was way too aggressive for me. So, they said, well, we wanna raise the fee from twenty to twenty-seven for just, you know, your animal renewed, and I, that makes no sense, because like Councilwoman Polly said, you're punishing the people who are actually abiding by the system. Whereas we have people who are not abiding by the system, and their dog ends up in the pound and things like that, those are the people who are not following the rules that should pay for the system. So, it, it only has three supervisors at this point supporting any concept of fees, and I'll get to that in a second, but I've made it very clear, to continue my support, I will not support raising that garden variety, like the general fee that most people pay. It is unconscionable to me to raise the abiding citizen fee, uh, when we have all these people who are not abiding. So, your point is very, very well taken. You are paying, apparently, I, I hope I have these numbers right, eighty-three hundred dollars in your budget for animal control, that's your share. The, the city managers of that one point four, the city managers said they would make up and distribute amongst all the contract cities the seven hundred and eighty of the one point four.
Correct.
And so, your share of that increase that was negotiated with the city managers is nine hundred dollars. So, your question to me tonight, I believe, is, well, what's gonna happen with the other six hundred and twenty-six? That's on the board's shoulders. In other words, the board needs to find a way to, to distribute that to the individuals who are using our services. We're not asking the cities to pay for that, because the first thing I would do, and I, and we have the numbers, I would immediately close Mondays at the animal control. I mean, we're open seven days a week, most of the services are on the weekends, adoption, things like that, we could close on a Monday, and to me, I just don't think it's gonna be the end of the world. The, so, there are ways to cut costs. We also have twenty-four hour call-out service. If you get a, a pet, if you get a vicious dog, let's say, so, I don't wanna be breed-specific, but let's say you have a specific kind of breed, the first call is gonna be to, the first sheriff's patrol, and there, because we don't have animal control, it's gonna be sworn personnel, they're gonna have to confront that animal. Nine times out of ten, they're gonna end up killing that animal, um, because they don't have the kinds of equipment in their car, plus the training, to take wild animals into cu- you know, into custody, essentially. So, so that could be an area where we cut, and we're just gonna push the burden onto law enforcement, so we're discussing that. But the bottom line is, there are ways to cut services. And then lastly, with respect to Tustin, we need a new animal shelter, and if you read the article in the Orange County Register, they just did an an- analysis about South County trying to do its own animal shelter, and it does not pencil. I mean, you, it is a regional service, it's very, very expensive for, say, Villa Park to get together with Tustin and Orange and start your own animal shelter. So, the solution, I think, is to continue with a model we have, which the county is the provider, but we just gotta get the costs under control. And so, I'm, I'm working on that, um, but I agree with your first premise about not punishing the law-abiding citizen, and the second is, we have to figure out where to find that other dollar. So, based on the city manager agreement, you would be good to the nine hundred in your budget.
But I think we need to make a little, I just wanna make some clarification on that. What you're looking at is what we're now currently seeing as the budget, I believe, is like eighty-three hundred dollars, uh, but prior, we, the prior year, we were only paying like six thousand dollars, and the year before that was only fifty-seven, so we've already, we've seen a ratchet of, of, of greater than two thousand dollars, and you're saying another nine hundred is what we're on the hook for, that's a huge jump.
There's been more fee-
And for a small city like ours, and then you can extrapolate it to the larger cities, and imagine what kind of a hit that's gonna be, that is unacceptable.
Well, there's not been a fee increase for any animal shelter services since July of two thousand and eight. Um, so you're saying that the contract cities, those costs have been passed on year after year? Are you, are you-
We would probably do better to have Michelle explain that to, to you.
Right.
Right. Basically, what we've been seeing is that the, the revenue that we, you have inc, um, received from Villa Park has not, has been five thousand roughly short of the expenditures that, um, Villa Park Services have been called out, you know, for pickups or, or whatnot. Um, five thousand, probably over a six, eight-year span was pretty much the average. And then a few years back, we had a credit, and so we technically were not paying it because we had paid too much in the previously, previous years. Um, went up to maybe fifty-five hundred, then it was fifty-seven, then it was six thousand, and then this, um, this last year, we had the NOI, the, um, Notice of Intent, said that we would be paying, I think, six thousand-
Yes.
Thirty-two dollars. That's, you know, basically for your full fiscal year. Well, after the second quarter, we were billed for sixty-eight hundred dollars, and, and we were like, wait a second, you mean, are you, are you assuming the whole year? Or is this just for half of a year? Now we're over what you budgeted, and, you know, where's the explanation for that? And then it was like, well, we, we got an interesting explanation for that about not using the correct numbers. But, um, beside that, that's a significant increase from a fifty-five, fifty-seven, you know, five to seven-year run.
Well, all I can tell you is, I, I completely agree, and we, I mean, the costs of providing animal care have gone up, obviously, right, with salaries and benefits of your employees? I mean, if you're going to give your employees three percent raise or whatever, you know, we didn't give raises during the down economy, but we just negotiated with the Orange County Employees Association, eighteen thousand employees, and they did get a raise. So the, the bottom line is, the money's going to come from somewhere, and because I know that Councilwoman Polly called it a tax, and I know I'm opening a can of worms saying this, um, and I don't mean to because I, I want to let you go on and have your meeting. But we call, the, the term of art is fee because it's not everybody's paying it, it's the people who are using the service.
What service am I receiving by paying for my dog? No service whatsoever. Uh, you know-
Well, if your dog's lost, there's a place for it to go.
My dog has never been lost. None of my dogs have ever been lost, and that's my point. The, the law-abiding and the responsible pet owner rarely is using the services, but they are paying for the services. Okay, we don't want to get into that any further. I appreciate it. I, I want, I'm really sorry, uh, I, because we've been at this an hour, but it's so rare to have you here, and I doubt that we'll have you back.
I'll come every week if you want to put me on the agenda, we just have a placeholder.
No, we don't. We don't want to do this to you. But another issue has been brought to my attention, and I know you're going to leave right away, and I think there are a number of citizens who are going to be talking about that, this. It has to do with the change in the, the flight, uh, paths being altered.
The Wednesday, it's tomorrow night, isn't it?
Yes.
Can I, can I announce that?
Would you please?
You know, Tom, before you do that, I, I'd like, because I'm still on this prior issue, I just have one quick question for you on the, on the pet issue. I'm one of those people that frankly believes the government can't do anything efficiently or, or very, very little efficiently, and that the private sector will do almost everything better than the government sector does almost every time. With that in mind, do you know if the county has the ability to send a request for proposal to the private sector and contract for the, uh, for the animal care services?
I, I don't know off the top of my head, but for example, and you're well aware of this, um, with respect to, say, firefighting services at John Wayne Airport, there's a specific statute that says you cannot bid out firefighting protection at an airport. But general animal control, somebody'd have to show me the statute, but I couldn't imagine, but, eh, it might exist.
You know, that's always-
Off the top of my head, I've never heard that for generic government service that the government chooses to get into, you couldn't privatize it.
Okay, that, that, that's something that I, I would suggest-
Well, look into it, I'll get to it.
Outstanding.
That the county consider, and, and just for my city's benefit, just so they have some idea of the basis for my statement, as, as, as Supervisor Spitzer just referenced, the John Wayne Airport put fire services out to bid to the private sector and came in with around a million dollar bid, with them making a profit and providing a fire service. The fire authority basically put the service out at cost at two million dollars. And we're still paying the two million dollars because I presume that the union, uh, beat the general public to the, uh, to Sacramento, and they prohibited the use of the private sector that pays the taxes from providing the service. So I, I just-
Well, just so you know, at John Wayne, that is not private, that's not taxpayers. Those services are all paid by the John Wayne Airport Enterprise Fund. So everything that's used to support John Wayne services, like firefighter suppression, just like parking, comes out of all the user fees. Now, do we pay a lot of money on our ticket prices to support all that? Absolutely. Does every airport lump, lump that on? Absolutely. But it, it's not, it's a, it's, comes out of the people that use the airport.
Is that basically a tax to, to essentially the general public? Yes, anybody uses it, if it flies anyway. So, I mean, I understand what, I understand what you're saying, but it's, it's still, it's still an involuntary payment by the public, so.
But tomorrow night on flights, let's talk about flights just real quick, and I'll close. So I live in East Orange, I'm your neighbor. Um, I just live, um, near, uh, Rancho Santiago Ca, uh, College, near, um, uh, the market. Um, and we get all the approach corridor. I mean, it's, our community's really, really impacted from landings going into John Wayne Airport on a normal day. You know, I mean, if they're Santa Ana's, it gets reversed, but air, most days, we are on the approach corridor. So I, you know, they're pretty high up over Anaheim Hills, but you can still hear them. Villa Park, you can still hear them. By the time they get to Tustin, it is very, very impactful. So I'm having a town hall, uh, the, I jumped ahead. So the airport is proposing expanding its map, million annual passenger count, and there has to be an environmental impact report. They have a settlement agreement with the city of Newport Beach and all the groups that were involved in litigation for years about keeping the curfew, because we have a curfew. And we have to protect that curfew. There are no new airports in the United States that are getting curfews. So we are very fortunate, since we have an airport, that we're getting, we're keeping, and there's no information that the FAA would wipe out our curfew. So Newport Beach has signed off on this increase, and they have the departures, so I don't need to tell you, they are severely impacted. And so tomorrow night at Hughes Middle School from six to eight, the public is invited, there was press releases, and it was in the local papers, to attend the presentation of the environmental impact report to the community. And if you come and testify, so you don't have to fill out anything, if you just come and speak, or you fill out a comment card, your comments will become part of the official record. So tomorrow is your opportunity to participate, and that's in, at North Tustin at Hughes Middle School, um, which is one three, two three two Hughes Avenue. And then, um, if you can't make that, there'll be one more opportunity, and that's at the John Wayne Airport offices.
In Costa Mesa. But I understood that the subject was having to do with increasing the number of flights that were allowed, that it had nothing to do with altering the routes. And we have, we have noticed a significant difference, particularly this past weekend, and it seems as though the approach routes have been altered in some fashion without our knowledge or input.
So the reason-
Would you look into that?
No, no, no. Listen, I'd like the planes to fly down the fifty-five corridor, like right over the freeway, because that would be the least impactful. The problem is, by going down the fifty-five, if you look at it on aerial map, it does not track perfectly the approach corridor. You have to cut over, you do have to cut over. I have brought, so we have some experts. I have brought this up over and over with the FAA, but tomorrow night is your opportunity to put those kinds of comments in the public record, because that has been my concern for a long time. Air, airlines are coming in from the east, Vegas, um, you know, the southwest, things like that. They, they're supposed to follow the approach corridor, but they can make a visual landing, and they cut the corners to save time. So they're coming, you know, into East Orange. I hear them all the time from my house. Um, and so you have a right to lodge that, and you will get a response, since they want to increase the flights, about what, if anything, needs to happen with respect to the flight paths.
Okay.
But I have been receiving my entire career complaints about noise going into John Wayne Airport. It is one of the biggest issues in the third supervisory district, and then, of course, the second district represented by Supervisor Morlock. That is one of his biggest issues representing Newport Beach. But the approach corridor gets hammered, and people think that the airport impacts is all about Newport Beach because of the departures. But we also are significantly impacted by the arrivals. So, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, thank you so much for having me. I, I took up way more time, um, than I deserved. Uh, you've been very, very kind to me, and I apologize to anybody if you came here for official business and, uh, I, I interrupted your plans. But, uh, we are monitoring everything you're doing, and I, I'll be happy to come back anytime. But thank you so much.
Well, thank you for coming, and, uh, I'd almost be surprised if you wanted to come back after that, but, uh-
How long have you known me, Mr. Mayor?
I know. Todd, if it, if it was anybody but you, I think they'd have had others. That's the last time ever going back. But yeah, honestly, I could see you coming back next week and taking it on again. I'll, I'll admit that.
Well, thank you so much.
Thanks, thanks a lot. Okay. Well, uh, do we have our former mayor, uh, Dr. Hilton here? I think we do. Bob, if you want to come on up to the podium here, I think we got something for you. A microphone. You get to take this home and-
Let me just, uh, we're, we're going to want to present you with this proclamation. Let me go ahead and read it. City Villa Park presents to Robert Hilton. The city council would like to extend best wishes and a sincere thanks to former mayor, council member, and friend, Robert N. Hilton, M.D., in this year two thousand fourteen. As Robert turns eighty-five years old, we on council appreciate and recognize his remarkable service, volunteerism, and friendship. We commend the commitment, dedication, and loyalty. Thank you for your leadership and many years of excellent service. Signed by the entire council. And knowing you personally, I thank you personally for all you have done and continue to do.
It's been my pleasure.
Could the two of you stand over here so I can get a picture? It's Bob's camera, and he wants a good picture. If I can figure out how to run his camera now. There we go. Thank you.
Could you show the proclamation to him?
Crowd, there's one more.
Could you show the proclamation?
Oh, put it up.
Another upside down.
You're upside down.
Who's eighty-five in this crowd? Good shot. Good. Thank you.
Thank you.
And we also have condolences for your recent loss.
Well, I guess we're ready for the Orange County Fire Authority update, so who's going to give us that?
That'd be me. Uh, Honorable Mayor, council members, city staff, and, uh, community members. Um, my name's Brian Young. I'm one of the two newly appointed battalion chiefs, um, serving Battalion Three, uh, including the city of, uh, Villa Park. I'm happy to be here. Um, looking forward to, uh, hopefully a long, uh, relationship with the city. I know we've had a lot of turnover recently with retirements or whatnot, but hopefully we'll have some continuity now throughout the, uh, the three shifts. Uh, briefly, I'd like to discuss, um, three different, um, items. One is the, the call volume for the service delivery area since the last board meeting. Uh, we, uh, had twenty-five, uh, calls for service in the Villa Park, um, municipal area. Twenty of those were EMS, emergency medical service, or medical-related, uh, which you know historically is, is a pretty, um, normal, uh, percentage rate. Uh, the variable five, um, other types of calls were a little, uh, smattering of different things. There was one fire call, um, in the performance period. Fortunately, it was a vehicle fire, uh, did not involve any kind of structure, so the loss was, uh, was minimal on that. Um, one, uh, second item I'd like to address, um, just kind of as an overview and, and refresh for everybody. I know everybody, um, saw the recent fires in San Diego, um, that transpired earlier in the month, and that was kind of a directly tied with the time period of Wildland, uh, Wildfire Awareness Week. And it brings up a good, um, call to, to remember some of those issues is, a lot of times you might not think that a city like Villa Park is somewhere that would be threatened with a wildfire, but we know in the eastern part of the city, we do have a distinct interface area. It might not be as extreme as we would see in the canyon, but it is definitely an issue. So just want to remember, remind everybody that, um, some of the important things is having an effective evacuation plan. San Marcos was, was hit pretty strongly with those wind-driven fires, and a lot of those houses that were burned were not directly in an interface area. It was that Downwind Ember production. So I just want to kind of re, uh, remind everybody the importance of that, uh, diligence and evacuation plan importance to protect your family, friends, and loved members. Um, last thing I wanted to address, um, Mr. Mayor, and, um, oh, Supervisor Spitzer already left, but, um, they're, uh, fully aware from being board members on our fire board. Um, we were, um, successful as far as the fire board of approving a balanced budget for two thousand fourteen, fifteen year for the, uh, Orange County Fire Authority. Uh, that's all I have prepared for tonight. Anybody have any questions?
I have a question.
Yeah.
There was, uh, an incident, you, a car fire that came up, and that came to my attention, um, by the owner of the, the vehicle calling my husband. When I asked the city manager about it, there seemed to be a void in the response of who came out. So had I not received a, a telephone call from a, a resident-
Right.
-we would have not had any idea, which is a big deal, I think, in our small community. If somebody, um, is accused, if you will, of throwing a lit object inside someone's vehicle-
Right.
-um, and lighting it on fire, that we didn't know anything about it. So can you tell me where the void might occur?
Well, so as far as awareness, um, obviously, as a, as a public safety agency, um, we're, we're not at liberty to divulge specifics of the case. However, if there's, if there's an issue that you have a concern with, we will always provide the insight as far as wanting some details, as long as it's not in context of the active case. Um, as my understanding, that was, uh, an intentional fire. Unfortunately, the timing of it was right when there was a ton of other fire activity in the county at that time, um, and our investigators were not available. I actually, uh, was in investigations just part of my promotion, so I know what that's like. You're spread pretty thin sometimes. And not to say that a vehicle fire doesn't rise to the standard of concern, it is still obviously an intentional fire that we take very seriously, but weighing it out, that actual time that you have a house fire and that going on at the same time, you can see how that fallout might have transpired. But what I would recommend to you is, is you can reach out to, to any of the battalion chiefs, um, at any time, and we'll provide insight if you have a question. Sometimes we're just not aware of information you might want actually, uh, reported to you. Um, so there, there's a criteria as far as, we don't really know what your criteria is, but we, we have no problem with providing the, um, the feedback, um, based on your recommendations.
Well, I think our point is, we like to know about everything that happens in our city.
Right.
That's really what, what we're worried about. Any little thing here, because this, uh, Councilwoman, I passionately said, not much goes on here, so we do need to know because we are queried by, by the community in, in general quite often. So that's the only reason we want to know.
Right. Yeah. And, and there's no problem with that. It's, you know, it's obviously just that criteria, because at the same time, you don't necessarily want to know every time somebody has chest pain.
Right. I think that's a good discussion to have, um, with our city manager, but in general, you know, a car fire, somebody's house catches on fire, one of the businesses catch on fire, those are the kinds of things that happen. Not every time EMS has to respond.
Right, absolutely. And actually, that relationship I had established, Division Chief Concepcion has already made that clear to me, um, with, with Mr. Mayor, as well as the city manager, that we do have a notification tree. Um, obviously, this one obviously somehow fell out of the notification, and it might be a criteria thing. So, so now that we know that that's the criteria, that there's an expectation, it makes it a little more clear. Because generally speaking, vehicle fires, even criminal in nature, most, most cities don't necessarily want that. But for your situation, obviously, it is, uh, an, a higher, higher level, um, where some cities might have, you know, twenty of them in that month period.
Let me just add to that. Mayor, council members, Chris Concepcion, Division Chief, um, stay up here in case they have any more questions for you. But, um, I just wanted to address that specific incident. Um, city manager, Hildebrand, actually did contact me. I was not made aware of the incident. Um, it doesn't, uh, we get paged on certain levels of, of incidents, and a single, uh, a single vehicle fire or a single unit, um, responding to a call, um, doesn't reach my level, or it doesn't even reach the, the battalion chief's level. So we didn't know about it, we didn't know about the call until actually, um, Mr. Hildebrand called me and said, hey, what's up with this? And I, I, as soon as, uh, as soon as I found that out, um, uh, I actually, uh, provided him the, um, incident, uh, report. So he's got all of the reports. Apologize for that, uh, breakdown in communication, but, uh, we will try to, to, in the future, uh, if, if I get notified about it, or if one of our battalion chiefs, uh, get notified about it, we will be, we'll be, uh, um, we'll, we'll, uh, we'll pass it on to Mr. Hildebrand so he can pass it on along to the, uh, entire council. Um, and, and anytime you guys have a, a question, or, uh, folks have a question of us of, of any sort regarding, um, the, um, the fire authority, please, uh, uh, Mr. Hildebrand's got my cell number, my, um, email- please, Mr. Hildebrand's got my cell number, my email address, and I'm available 24/7.
Thank you. I feel obligated to make just a really quick comment here in light of some of the comments I made while Supervisor Spitzer was here because I'm sitting on the fire board. I want to make it clear that to any of the publics listening, this Fire Authority does a great job. They do an excellent job. Their ratings are excellent. The people that I deal with down there frankly are great people. I enjoy virtually all of them I've been involved with. It's a great organization. The problem in all the bickering and tension you may have seen between Todd and I over this issues is the defined benefit plans where the agency guarantees to pay a certain level, in many cases all of the retirement or the compensation at the time of retirement, for an unlimited period of time, don't work. They don't pencil. Huge deficits are being created in the hundreds of millions at the Fire Authority, probably approaching a billion if not over huge real numbers, and billions of dollars at the county level and many billions of dollars at the state level. They're not sustainable. You can't fund them. They don't work, and it's ridiculous. And that's my frustration. I didn't want to paint a picture here for anybody derogatory to the agency or the staff. They do a great job and they're great people. They just need to deal with that defunding. And as the chief just pointed out, they've got a balanced budget this year. That's true, except that every year, retroactively, they discover that it really wasn't balanced because they readjust for the liability that is then shown to exist on the defined benefit plans. And what do you know? It really wasn't balanced, and that happens year after year after year. And those huge deficits have accrued, and they continue to accrue, and they will continue to accrue, I believe. So anyway, that's my concern. Did not want anybody to think I had bad mouthed the Fire Authority. They're good people. That said, can we get the report from the Sheriff's Department?
Thank you, Mayor, City Council. For last month's activity, we have a total for April of six Part One crimes. Just to go over those real quick. We did have of the grand thefts, we had one person that had a gardening or tree trimming service working at their property. Someone came and took the chainsaw while the workers ran back. We had someone shoplift a Ralph's. Again, that happened again yesterday. Someone walked out with a cart full of groceries. Deputy Muir was here in three minutes and could not find the person that they described. Anyhow, petty theft, someone had some things taken from the residents where they thought they moving company, basically, that helped them move, made off with some of the items, so that's still being looked at. We had one window smashed residence where jewelry and a TV was stolen. And then one vehicle, actually two vehicles burglaries. One where someone left the window partially open to keep it cool, but they also left medications and cash in there. And then one at the Serrano Elementary School where someone left a purse on the front seat. And as you know, as you can imagine, someone took thirty seconds to be gone with that purse. So those are the six Part One crimes that we have for last month. Overall, we are still down monthly, or every month so far this quarter. We've been down from last year's totals every month, so hopefully that stays the same as it's going. Any questions for me?
We hope you stay bored.
Lieutenant Guns, I just wanted to thank you and the Fire Authority for coming out to our picnic that we had last weekend. It was much appreciated. All the kids had fun jumping all over your equipment. I'm sure you had to re-shine it up after that. But we sure thank you for coming out. It was a fun day.
Jay Wasserman is the best when it comes to, he jumps right on that. Just to confirm, did you guys have the flyover because there was some confusion as to when the chopper could make it?
You know, I didn't see it myself.
It had to be after two o'clock because they didn't have staff to do it before.
Oh, okay.
So they asked if it could be after two, and Jared asked, I said, yeah, that's fine. So I wasn't sure if it made it after two o'clock or not. Depends on their call volume, of course.
Yeah, we assume they were busy, obviously, so. But thank you and the Fire Authority for your participation.
And then we're all aboard for all the same services at the Bobcat overnight on the sixth, I think it is. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Lieutenant Guns. Okay, it looks like it's time for oral communications. So any members of the public in attendance wishing to address the city council on matters not otherwise appearing on the agenda and within the jurisdiction of the city council upon recognition, and we're going to cut this short. If there's anybody that'd like to talk about something that's not on the calendar, now's your time to do it. Just come on up to the podium and give us your name and address, and you got, where do we have Jared?
Five minutes.
Five minutes, max. Thank you.
Frank Morales, ninety-six eighty-one Dotson Way. Mayor, city council members. Again, I'm here to talk about the Serra Villa Middle School extracurricular activities and the impact that it has on the traffic, especially on the weekends. We've attended most of the meetings that have been suggested, the community development meeting and the school advisory committee meeting. And we really thought that we were doing some progress, and we probably are. We had been promised that the gate at the school was going to be open. There's a gate in the back and it was going to be open so that additional, they could park back there in the back. We were also told that the Little League was informed of the parking situation, and they were going to have parking signs put up on the streets, and they have. We were also promised that there was not going to be any other soccer. It was just going to be Little League that was going to be playing, so once the Little League was going to be over, we would all have peace and quiet again at Villa, and that there was going to be a traffic study. And I know that the traffic study is being done. So we felt very positive of the developments that were going on. Unfortunately, this weekend, Memorial Day weekend, we had just a setback to us. You know, at seven-thirty in the morning, we were at home hoping that we would have a relaxing weekend. And all of a sudden, we start hearing the doors, the cars parking, the doors in the trunks all banging, people yelling, the kids screaming, people doing illegal U-turns, and the alarms going off. In fact, I did, we did a power presentation, and we sent it to the mayor and the city council with pictures of Serrano, how it looked at nine o'clock in the morning, Dotson Way, Brima Drive, and all the situation that was going on. Now, in addition to that, we looked at the gate that was in the back, and the gate was again closed. And there's plenty of parking back there that could accommodate a lot of cars, and there was, the gate was closed, so nobody could park back there. In fact, I took a picture of a gentleman that was trying to climb over the fence. He parked the car there. He was trying to climb over the fence. And again, that's an unsafe thing, but he couldn't make it, and so he had to walk all the way around. But we feel that, you know, we thought that we were doing progress with all these things that we were promised, and it was a soccer game that was going on. And it's just, it's just, it's just really hard, and it's really frustrating. And so what we're asking, this is a nuisance. It's getting to be, it needs to be corrected. And just requesting your help, and if there's any guidance that you guys can give us, please do so. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
My name is Mary Beth Felsen. I live at ninety-six twenty-two Feather Hill Drive in Villa Park. Frank has told you what it was like this weekend. So we were asking ourselves, what is it can we do? Now, in attending the meetings, it was the one suggestion that has stood out to us is that we petition for parking by permit only. And we understand, and we're going to pursue that. And I hope we get a good response from our residents. And further, I hope that when you receive this petition, that you will allow us to have it, have parking by permit only. Because our streets are full of cars. We appreciate that people want to attend the different activities that are occurring on the school property. But the school is not providing parking. They are not providing supervision. And it is so crowded on the street that you have to drive extremely slowly because people are running back and forth. So we don't want that. So we will pursue parking by permit only. We appreciate the fact that you're going ahead with the parking, the traffic study. But we need some relief from this because this traffic problem is going to continue all through the summer. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Lori Tribber. I'm at ninety-six eighty-two Dotson. And I'm just kind of reiterating what Frank said about Saturday, how bad it was. And he had taken his photographs unbeknownst to me that he had done that, and so it was about four forty-five that day, same day that I came home, saw how bad, it was really bad then in front of my home, trying to just come around my corner. So I started taking photographs as well. A couple hours later, we left to go do something, and it was still pretty heavy traffic up till about eight o'clock Saturday night. So we got a little stressed out about that. Then the next day, we saw trucks, several trucks with porta-potties. So we saw them come around Serrano, the school, and into that lot where the gate was. And we thought they were trying to unload, and they did get out and check the gate. It was locked, and we watched them go around and come up into Serrano. So we thought, I thought, that it was a tournament that was happening, and it was going to be set up again for Sunday, which didn't happen, thank goodness. And so we're grateful for that. But it's the same thing. Just, it is just so, it is so unbelievable on, just on Saturday, what was going on again. It just, it's just way, way too much chaos, way, way too many people. And I don't know what was going on this week prior to this game, but all week long, we've had traffic at odd hours, not your normal school drop-off pickup. It's been like random hours throughout the day. We've had the PA system, one day I think I listened to, not that I don't like it, mind you, but, you know, not hours of it. I listened to the school play Elvis Presley music for like three hours one day. I don't know what that was all about. The PA system has, I don't know if it's rallying, if it's the end of the school. I don't know what's going on, but the system has been so unbelievably loud that I can be in my home, on my phone, and you can hear the background of the PA system in the house. It's that loud. So it's just reiterating that again, and it wasn't just from like seven to five or seven to six. This went on until eight, eight-thirty Saturday night. And it's just, it's stressful. It is really stressful for us to have this. And we understand during the school hours, but like I said, we had so much activity in one week that by the time Saturday came, I think we were just, I think everybody that was in our area was just stressed out. So like I said, we saw porta-potties on Sunday and made that assumption and just were beside ourselves. And like I said, it turned out it wasn't, and I thank God for that, but we're just basically on that same subject again of. By the way, Little League did come in and they put up, I mean, we were like dancing in our living room. They had come in and put up the cones, and they were like perfect where they were parking, and it was like so unbelievably pleasant. I mean, how much they were caring about how we felt. So that was fantastic. So we kind of were all pumped up about that, and we saw, you know, there were some other things going on, and the gate at one point was open. So we were all excited and happy about that, and then Saturday came, nightmare from hell day. And we basically went into that whole stress thing again. So I thank you for listening, and I apologize for that email where I freaked out on the Sunday, Monday thing. And just hope that we can do some permitting or some zoning or, like I said, even what the Little League did was really made a huge difference. It was just made a huge difference. So, I mean, even if some of these teams, that these other teams would even do that courtesy, I mean, I just can't tell you how much of a difference it makes to be able to come into our house and not have the streets like that. And I don't know, it just, they cared. So I thank you for your time.
Thank you for that, and let me just add that I'm happy to hear that the conflicting groups, if you will, have gotten together and talked. I'll just tell you that we had one other matter that I can think of that was ongoing here, and it was very difficult to deal with it. And the parties on both sides of the concern started communicating. We haven't heard from them since. So if you can communicate directly with those groups, I highly recommend it. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Wayne Salzal, as you know, one eighty-two oh-two Montana Circle, right here in Villa Park. For many years, we've been struggling to keep the overflight over Villa Park of the commercial aircraft that lands at John Wayne Airport. And with many thanks to one councilman who took that on as a personal responsibility was Bob McGowan. And Bob has, going to be moving from the city, and we'll miss him after forty years of residency here. But he still is as concerned because we've noticed, as Deborah mentioned, the increase in overflights that have occurred here just recently, and they continue. I wish we'd have had it agendized so we could have talked to Scott a little more, or Todd, I mean, but we didn't. The point here is that, I think, is the air traffic controllers are not disciplining the pilots to follow the correct routing, and that's part of the problem. So they need to be deputized, if necessary, to enforce that restriction. Many of the aircraft here now are crowding into line because they're on a strict timetable with coming in, and so they can cut off a few minutes instead of going out to the ninety-one freeway and beginning their approach. Most of them even cut across Villa Park and on in. And if they're coming from LAX or points north, they're going to cut the corner instead of going clear out to the ninety-one and beginning. Now, the ILS is an instrument landing approach that is in direct line with the runways. And they're crossing Villa Park at a height of about twenty-three hundred feet. That's the scheduled distance, no lower. They can't go lower because helicopter heights are up to fifteen hundred feet, and there's five to six hundred feet separation between any aircraft. And that's pretty close, in my opinion. But the VFR, and I put VIR because I'm not a pilot, Frank corrected me tonight, he's retired United Airlines, retired pilot. VFR is visual approach. Now, when the weather's nice and so forth, they like to push the traffic over here towards the fifty-five freeway, as Todd mentioned. They seldom go clear to the fifty-five. They come over Villa Park at that same altitude, about twenty-three hundred feet. And thanks to technology, the jet engine noise is a lot less today than it was ten years ago, or maybe it's been fifteen now. But, so we don't have as much suffrage as we did when I was on council. So I would suggest that, by the way, on that VFR approach, there requires when they get about a half mile to a mile, maybe it's a mile, let's say, they have to make a fifteen-degree turn to approach the runway. At this point, they're down. They're down there at a thousand feet or less. The runway is only fifty-seven hundred feet long. To quote Bob McGowan, "It's the worst commercial airport that pilots fly into in the United States." Now, I've heard a lot of quotes about the worst or the biggest and so forth. I can't verify that number. LAX runways are eleven thousand to twelve thousand feet. El Toro is over fifteen thousand square feet. In fact, I think it's closer to twenty, twenty-five thousand. So we're bringing jet aircraft in on a fifty-seven hundred-foot runway, and you've ridden it. You know how they break and how they have to really take off with great power. So it's, to me, the more aircraft we keep flying over with an airport that's got its inherent problems for size, we're going to have some, we're going to have some real serious accidents sooner or later. And of course, I share sorrow with many residents who saw the vote go down to convert the El Toro base to a commercial aircraft. We had two billion dollars worth of runway there that go for twenty thousand feet for military that sit vacant today. And for ten years, they haven't figured out how they're going to tear up the runway and improve it. So it's just, it's ridiculous. So I put this outline, just summary of facts, in your email, so I would give you copies, but you don't need to carry more paper home. But I just wanted to bring it up. What Todd says, tomorrow night at six o'clock at the Hughes Middle School, emerging since Villa Park and Orange did not respond to this EIR in any, in previous meetings, according to this EIR I just read through, you're listed as non-reply. So it's important that we represent Villa Park citizens because the move is to put, and you heard Todd say it, to push the traffic away from his neighborhood over there in Tustin, which is the ILS approach, into the VFR approach, which is over us. So, and that's happened in the past. When a former supervisor lived over there, we had to fight real hard to get him to push him back to the more safe approach, which is a direct in. So that's about all I know about aircraft and landings.
Mr. Szelzal, can I ask a question? Are you intending to be at the public forum tomorrow?
Yes.
Okay.
6:00 PM tomorrow night.
Okay.
And I'll be saying the same thing to them with a little more enthusiasm.
Thank you.
I'm Mary Szelzal, 18202 Montana Circle, Villa Park. I just want to make two comments. We all knew years ago the projections for the growth of John Wayne Airport and the needs. And there was a very obvious solution available. And it was not taken advantage of because the city of Irvine and South County did not want the inconvenience and the noise of it. I think now we're being faced with the fact, will our county representatives represent all of the county? Or will, will we find that what is going to inconvenience and destroy the quality of life for people in the central county and north county pay the same respect to that opinion as they have to the south county and Irvine? Secondly, for I don't know how many consecutive years, we attended the Fairhaven Memorial Day Tribute yesterday down at Fairhaven Cemetery. For the first time ever that we have been there, following the flyover with the missing man formation, that's always part of the, the very solemn celebration. The entire event was interrupted by United Airlines' commercial flight that flew directly over the top of Fairhaven Cemetery, interrupting the celebration. This is what we're facing because the pilots have been told that it's okay now to veer off the landing patterns. And they'd rather do that than suffer the possible fine for a late arrival. So we need to step up. This is our only chance.
Thank you, Szelzal family. Anybody else? No kids coming up?
No, you're lucky.
Okay. Anyone else like to be heard on any matters? It appearing not, I guess we'll move on to our public hearings.
First item of business.
Yep, first item of business. I walked around before this meeting saying, "I'm going to get this thing out by 8:30 tonight." It's 8:10 and we haven't even hit the first scheduled item. So, all right, I'll yield on that one. Anyway, first item, consideration for conditional use permit number 0755, request to provide massage therapy services at the Pure Skin and Body Lounge in the town center at 17767 Santiago Boulevard, number 610, with the applicant Devon MacArthur. Does staff have a report on this one for us?
Yes. Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Trying to make this one as quick, knowing there's a lot of stuff on the agenda. Tonight's first agenda item is conditional use permit number 0755. This first agenda item, conditional use permit number 0755. The applicant Devon MacArthur is proposing to offer massage therapy services at Pure Skin and Body Lounge located in the town center. The reason for the hearing is Municipal Code Section 23-73, which requires businesses offering massage services to attain a CUP. As you can see in the slide, the business is located in an existing suite in the northwest, northwest corner of the town center. The business has been operating since early 2014, providing a variety of services, including skincare, facials, waxing, barbering and so on. The reason the applicant is applying for, to have massage services is to better serve their clients, to offer a more wide variety of services similar to other salons and day spas throughout the area and within the town center. The tenant space is approximately 1,600 square feet. It has seven rooms in there, five of which are treatment rooms. The applicant is proposing to use two of those rooms for massage services. Typical business hours are going to be between 8:00 AM and 7:00 PM with last appointments made at 7:00. So massages may end at latest 8:00 PM. The owner expects to have a total of five employees on site at one time. And as you guys know, you know, massage uses do have their concerns, whether they fit well with the character of the town center. This is not the first, or massage use that is within the town center. Council has approved this use before in the past. To date, the city has not had any problems or concerns that would jeopardize the surrounding neighborhood or the other uses. Some of the things that staff looked into are hours of operation. The town center is able to be open until 11 o'clock PM. This use is only going to be going until about 8 o'clock, so this will be closing before, about three hours before 11. Other surrounding uses, there are multiple other salons and day spas within the center. The intention of the operating business within the town center is to have a variety of uses available to the community. So this does meet that intention. Parking, it's not anticipated to have any major impacts, although that corner does sometimes have struggles finding spaces. So we have added a condition that the employees that are working do park not in the adjacent spots right in front. So it doesn't impact those surrounding businesses right there. Noise, there's no additional noise that's created with the business. So I know there's some residential uses just to the north, so it's not anticipated to impact them. Staff met with CDC, they recommend approval. Staff was able to make all the findings and recommend approval of CUP 0755. If you have any questions, staff would be happy to answer them. And also, I believe the applicant is in the audience as well. If you have any questions for her.
This came to the CDC and we didn't have any, no, any issues with it. I do have a comment to Tyler and to our city manager. The sign saying scraps is still up. And we do have an ordinance on the books that when a business does, you know, leave, that it's supposed to remove its sign, I believe, after 30 days. Why is that sign still up if they've been in business now for a while?
I believe we had a letter out last week, or the week before. I've never seen one go through my box. I noticed that as well because the signs, there's, Pure went into Altera Real Estate and Scraps is still up. Both of them need to come down. And a letter was sent out to the property owners.
And this doesn't affect you? Just, it looks like there's a place that sells dog food and you don't sell dog food. You're on the corner, right. But there's, there's conflicting. So maybe we can get those signs.
Yeah, letters have gone out to the property owners and they're alive.
I guess the question is why weren't the sign, why weren't the letters going out earlier? Because Scraps has been out of business since January 1st.
I have no answer for that.
Okay, I want to talk about this a little bit. First of all, the background on the report indicated that this was in scraps, so that was inaccurate. That's one, that's my starting point for concerns I have, not with the applicant or having massage therapy. First of all, I'm a spa hopper. I'm a professional spa hopper. And I welcome the idea of massage therapy being a little closer to home. I happened to attend the grand opening for the salon and was given a tour and was able to hear some of the plans that she had. And I think it's exciting for us to have that. But when I was reading through the conditions of approval, and mine was an interesting read, it's, it's one of the sloppier, I mean, it's a mess in many ways. And I'm just going to go ahead and say that we need to clean some of this up before we can approve it. I'm going to start with item number two, limited to two massage therapists, so there needs to be an S there. Items number two, and look at the numbering. We've got 1, 2, 3, 4, and then 2 and 4 repeat themselves. Those two items are the exact same verbiage. So the numbering needs to be corrected. And then the first or the second one of these that talks about space for storage of clean linen, one of those needs to be removed since it's repeated twice as a, as a condition of approval. I didn't think it was funny where it said you could use heavy white paper as a substitute for sheets. Yeah, you can, but I'm only coming once if I find out that that's what you, that's just a personal opinion. I'm sure you don't. I thought that was interesting. But then I'm, I'm getting into some of these other items that were more interesting read. And, and it's just, it's a bit of a mess when you're talking about 12, item 12, and I'm on page four. And it's talking about, you know, how people need to be dressed that are working there. You've got A, upper garments, and then, and then suddenly B cuts in here. It shouldn't be there at all. And then C, then you've got skirts, then you've got shorts. I mean, it's just, it's a mess. It's a mess. And then if you look at page five, it doesn't even make sense. It starts talking about a resolution 2005-2838, and then page five is stuck in the middle. There's misnumberings and I don't know how this happened. Maybe, it looks almost like two or three different ones kind of got merged together and it never got finally corrected. Are you with me? Do you see what I'm talking about?
Yeah, my apologies on that. Some of these conditions were taken from a prior CUP that was approved. And yeah, my apologies on some of the mistakes. There's some, some typos in there.
Yeah. Well, I want to just ensure that what we're approving, and I, and I don't want to hold the business up because of administrative errors of staff, that these are corrected and that it's cleaned up, where things are numbered properly and we don't have a big mess because this is what she'll be operating under. I would be in support of, of the CUP. With, with a significant amount of cleanup. I would make a motion that we approve Resolution Number 2014-32. Oh, you have to have a public hearing. Sorry.
And actually, before we open the public hearing, if I could add a couple, suggest a couple revisions to the conditions as well.
Thank you, because it's a mess.
The, the massage parlors have been sort of a topic of city government interest in the last couple of years. There have been some changes to the law. And as Tyler indicated, some of these conditions were taken from a past CUP. So as a result of that, they need to have some updating to reflect current law. In particular, number six, entrances to cubicles, rooms and areas provided for patrons' use. We, under the Health and Safety Code, the city cannot, sorry, under the Business and Professions Code, the city cannot actually require that the, that the doors do not lock. That's expressly provided by state statute. So we need to eliminate the use of the term which cannot lock at the end of that. Number 17.
I know.
This may simplify the, the formatting issues. Massage therapists, the city also can't sort of impose extra requirements on massage therapists, like background requirements or anything like that. So it should, instead, I would recommend suggesting that the, number 17 read, massage therapist must provide their name, residence address, telephone number, and proof of current certification by the state as a certified massage therapist or practitioner, period. And delete everything that follows on 17.
Everything.
Everything.
Perfect. I was wondering why it seemed to me like we were reiterating what state standards would be or state licensing would be.
Yeah, that's pretty much what it's saying. So simplified, it's that the therapists or practitioners would in fact just be licensed, certified by state.
So then everything after 17 is all cut?
Seven, all of 17. So the numerals, or sorry, A through J.
And then 18, and then we pick up with 18?
Pick up with 18. And for 18, instead of expire upon termination of applicant's lease, I recommend that this should be changed to expire five years from the date of issuance from the CUP and may be extended from time to time upon application approval prior to the permit's application. Generally speaking, conditional use permits run with the land. So as the applicant changes, if there's a change in ownership, the permit actually stays with the land. State law doesn't allow us to, to specifically impose permitting requirements on a massage parlor in particular. And if this expires with the current lease, that would indicate that in fact we are specifically permitting just this massage parlor. So instead, I would recommend that it, it run with the land for five years and that the person, whoever is then operating that business can come back and reapply and get a, an extended permit.
I have a question then with that. Can that be accomplished administratively without coming back before council? If they're just having their CUP extended?
If, if, if that's authored, we can write that into the condition.
I would like to do that. And then I would also, there's a, there's a fee that goes with this. Is this particular CUP requiring a fee? Okay. And then I would, you know, if they're just reapplying, if the existing business is just reapplying to continue the CUP, that no, waive the fee.
Good idea.
Okay, well, I guess I should ask, does the council have any questions of staff or did we just finish that?
We just did that. We need to open the public hearing.
That's kind of what I figured. I think I have one or two. The CUP runs with the land or it runs with the lease?
Initially, this permit runs with the land.
So even if this, so if we permit, if we, if we issue the CUP on this and this tenant were to disappear or this place closed and six months later, but during that period, a brand new massage therapy facility came in, then that would be covered by the same CUP?
Yeah, up to the five-year expiration period. You can limit the period if you so desire, if you would like a shorter period. I came up with five years because I just thought that was a reasonable amount of time so that the applicant isn't required to come into the city all the time to extend their permit. But whatever you desire as to the timeframe of the permit would be appropriate.
So the timeframe's not restricted? There's no statutory limitation?
There's not a statutory limitation, just that it can run, it runs with the land but can expire. But it can't, generally speaking, well, it can expire based on a temporal limitation, but it can't expire just by non-use. So the city would have to take affirmative action to revoke the permit. So for example, in your scenario, if the applicant, if the business ceases to operate, the city can take action under the municipal code to revoke the permit so that a future tenant doesn't come and use that permit, if that is something the council desires.
And I assume it could be conditioned also upon no violations of applicable law with regard to the operation of the facility? If it, and I'm being very broad here, even if this one were to be sold and we had another, I'm getting the feeling that, that at least some of council is comfortable and familiar with this operator because I don't have any knowledge of this, but I'm kind of seeing that here from the comments that have been made. So if this operator were to disappear or sell and we had another operator that was less desirous, we'd have to live with our land use modification because that's essentially what it's a land use change. But if there's violations, we could put constraints in the CUP to, for it to lapse.
Yeah, it's a common condition that the applicant must comply with all local, state and federal regulations. So we could add that condition in if you desire. That would be totally appropriate.
And if we wanted to, we could set it for two-year periods and...
On the expiration period?
Yeah.
Two years is, if you feel that's more appropriate, that would also be...
See how it goes. I'm just, I'm just thinking out loud because I've seen what's here. It doesn't tell me a lot and I'm kind of living with it. So, okay.
I would say that most leases are five years though, and I, five years is a good, is a good amount.
I think that's a great, I think that's a great number. Five is great.
landlords don't want to write two-year leases. It's not...
And we really don't, we don't need to really worry about being able to revoke the CUP if somebody is not operating. That's what the whole idea of a conditional use permit is. If they violate any subsequent business that goes in there, if they violate it, they violated the conditions. It's over.
Well, they come back to us for a, they would come back to council for replication.
That, I assume that is probably a little more tedious process than just dealing with the lapse and not renewing it though.
Right, that requires a public hearing. I would recommend you open the public hearing so that the applicant can speak.
I'm just going to do that. So if we have any members of the public, it looks like we have our applicant, I presume?
Yes, Devon MacArthur. I just want to say I've been a resident for 35 years and my family has two businesses in the center already. So we have a pretty strong reputation and I don't plan on doing anything, you know, irresponsible with the permit. I've been in the center working already in a different location for two years. So, you know, I don't, I'm not going to do anything. So if you want to do maybe that along with my lease, my lease is signed for three years. So maybe if you want to do that permit with three years, I would understand. That way it kind of coincides.
I, I'm just, if you're candid, I, from, from the interaction I've seen here, it appears council, those of that know you anyway, are very comfortable with this seemingly, so...
She's, knows my father more than myself, but...
That, that does make sense to me though.
But the apple doesn't fall far from the tree.
When it concurrently with the term of the lease makes a certain amount of sense because I see, I see a comfort level with this operator. But should that change, there's maybe issues. I'm not familiar with all the background. I just know that there's a lot of, lot of tension and scandal going along with the, with the massage parlors these days, so I just...
I don't even like the word parlor, if that helps. I don't even like the word parlor, if that helps. I feel like that sounds a little seedy, so I won't be using that word.
Anyway, they're...
Yeah, what is the name, it's a, it's a, what is the name of your business?
Pure Skin and Body Lounge.
There you go.
And I'm gonna have a barber, so, you know, I'm trying to, you know, make it friendly to men and women, so...
I mean, it would be nice to have one here, quite frankly, so...
Thank you.
Anything else you'd like to say?
I'm good, I'm good, if you guys are good.
Well, thank you.
Okay.
Go ahead, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Well, are there anyone else?
Any council have any?
I have no questions of the applicant, we just need to be sure that no one else wants to speak to this and close the public hearing.
Yeah, I'll get to that. Okay, well, thank you very much. If anyone else would like to address it, the matter? Appearing to be none. I frankly would suggest that, it looks like we probably already got a bunch of motions coming, I'd like to suggest that we make the term concurrent with the lease, with the lease term, yeah, I think that would make sense, and then if she renews, we have the opportunity to deal with it, and if something happens, and she goes somewhere, and we have a new operator, we have another opportunity to address it.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, I would don't recommend specifically conditioning the, or specifying that the condition and the permit run side by side, just because of the concern that it would appear that you were then operating this, or regulating this specific business. That's why I would suggest a number of years.
That was fine, three years.
Okay.
That's what I'm saying. I'm not, I didn't indicate that it would run concurrently with the lease, just that it would be three years.
Interesting.
And then, you know, if we want to reconsider it later, you know, that can be done.
Okay. Are we ready for a motion?
Go ahead.
Okay. I would, well, but I, right, resolution, that we approve Resolution number two zero one four dash three two eight one with the cleanup and also with the changes recommended by the city attorney, and setting the limit for three years. I think that's just fine.
Let's have a vote?
For vote? Councilman Polly?
Yes.
Councilman Mills?
Yes.
Councilman Reese?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Passanelli?
Yes.
Mayor Burnett?
Yes.
Well, we got, we got one minute to finish the rest of the calendar.
Yeah, he got some work to do.
Yeah, I don't think we're gonna make the eight-thirty. Okay, item number two, resolution of the city council, City Villa Park declaring conditions present at one oh one oh one Center Drive, Villa Park, California, constitute a public nuisance. If we got a staff report on that one?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, Mayor, and members of the council, tonight's second agenda, tonight's second agenda item is...
Can we give him a microphone, because I don't...
Speak to them, not the microphone. The microphone will catch up and it will project backwards.
Can you hear me now?
No.
Hear me now?
Maybe we'll get another speaker, because the speakers are rear-facing, so we'll get another speaker for our case.
I'll just speak louder. All right, tonight's second agenda item is a public hearing to determine whether conditions at one oh one oh one Center Drive constitute a public nuisance. This item was last heard at the April two thousand fourteen, city council meeting, where the city council declared its intent to conduct a public hearing regarding the conditions at this property. As you know, we have a, we don't have an active code enforcement, we have a reactive, so we deal on a complaint basis, and our goal is ultimately compliance. Back in January of this year, we received an anonymous complaint. There was multiple inoperable vehicles stored within the front yard setback, and there was Christmas lights, holiday lights that were up past, you know, their duration. So as staff does with any, you know, complaint, we went out, did an inspection, you know, we noted that there was multiple vehicles being stored within the front yard setback, some you would, may appear to be inoperable, and they may have not moved for some time. Staff had followed up and sent them a letter back in January twenty-third. Letter basically gave the owner a couple different options. One, remove the vehicles from the front yard setback, two, have them stored within a structure, or three, if they are operable, to provide proof of the operability. And when we mean proof of operability, meaning that they start, can drive forward or backwards, and they have proper registration. After the letter was sent, staff received a response letter in February. I guess the owner was busy attending some other things. He stated that he would address the issue within a couple days, a month went by, staff didn't hear anything, and so we issued the follow-up letter, a notice of violation, giving another deadline. At that time, no response or action was taken, so we went forward with the typical administrative citation process. From that point on, it was basically a, going back and forth of sending out a letter and receiving a response from the owner, and here we are today. Right now, the citations, depending on how city council feels appropriate, can be dealt with in two different fashions. One, if city council would want to go that route, they could be all charged as one violation, which would put the fines at over thirty thousand, or if you were to charge them individually, it'd be, you know, much, much more, over two hundred thousand, realistically, I know, it's a lot, so. At this time, you know, staff recommends that the city council approve Revolution, Resolution two thousand fourteen thirty-two eighty, declaring conditions at one oh one oh one Center Drive a public nuisance, requiring actions and corrections within thirty days. And we would like to note as well that for the vehicles, staff has no problem with coming to the site, setting up a time to meet. All we want to see, and all we need to see, is just proof of operability, that they start, that they drive forward and back, and that they have a proper registration. I know that the owner has informed us that they are properly registered, that they do work. Unfortunately, the city needs to see that in order to be in compliance. If you have any questions, we'd be happy to answer them.
I have some comments, just for the council, just to make sure, as well as the public. The incident that I spoke of with the fire authority earlier was a car fire that had to do with this location. It's my understanding that a car cover was on the car, so the car cover was removed, the window was open, and a flammable object was thrown through the car. So, just to make sure that everybody understands, I'm not sure what happened there. I don't know if there's an investigation going on, if the homeowner's done anything for it, but I want to make sure that everybody knows what we were talking about. Have you spoken to the owner of the vehicles? And just told him, we just need to see if they move?
Uh, no.
Just need the registration?
Sent the letters out to the home to get a response back. I went to the home on one occasion, but nobody was there, so. And I don't have a direct phone number to the house to call, so...
I think the owner of the vehicles are here, am I right? So maybe we'll have the opportunity to speak, because I'd certainly like us to try and take care of it through other means, if we can.
Tyler, I have a suggestion. I have a feeling if you dispose of that microphone, it'll work better, because I'm guessing when you're talking, and you're hearing yourself, and adjusting your speech level, and if you get rid of that thing and talk to us, I think we'll hear you better.
Welcome.
We'll see. Okay, anyone else have any questions of staff? I have one. Do the vehicles need to be current? Do they need to have current tags, or they just, they just need to have plates? Or what is the rule there, or do we know?
The rule is that they need to be operable on California streets, so that would require current tags, insurance, and that they run and drive.
Okay, thank you.
That's only because they're of a setback.
In the setback, yes. If they're in the garage, if they're in the rear yard, a side yard, or without of the setback, which is the first thirty feet of the property, would be just fine.
Any other questions?
How many vehicles are we looking, are in the...
Approximately six?
There's more than that.
About six, seven?
Six for seven.
Six. Any other questions of staff? No. Any members of the public that want to like to address this? Come on up and announce your name and address, and we'd love to hear from you.
I'm here for one reason tonight. My name is Gary Krantz, I live at ninety-nine ninety-two Center Drive, about four doors down on the opposite side of the street. I'm not worried about what's happening to him, I'm worried about what you guys do tonight, or the next week, or the week after. He's got five or six cars parked there, that is nothing. You need to drive through your own city if you want to see some of the messes we've got of automobiles. I own seventeen vehicles. Some days I have as many as six, seven, eight of them at my house. Most of the time I don't, but I, in fact, right now I've got a big T-vert sitting in my garage, and one of them tearing apart. I mean, it's beside the point. I heard something about Christmas lights. Most even know where I live. I put up Halloween, I put up Christmas, I put up, you name the holiday, I put it up. Are we gonna limit that? Then I'm gonna start yelling. Otherwise, I have not much to say. There's not much you can do, there's cars all over this city with car covers on them sitting in their front yard. Got one up three or four streets up, brat, couple very, very nice cars, I wish I owned both of them myself, but they're sitting in his front yard, covered up. What are we gonna do? I mean, some of us have hobbies. Someone's got big hobbies, doing expensive ones, but I, I think, first thing I want to know is, who complained? We ain't got enough guts, the guy hasn't got enough guts in this room here to stand up? Who complained? And then you guys wasted time, because there's nobody who's complained? If we have a complaint, stand up and come up here and complain. I'd like to know who's gonna do it, who's got guts to complain.
Thank you. Anyone else like to be heard on this matter?
Wayne Szelzal again, I've already stated my address. Mr. Bivins has come to my house exasperated several times through this process, and each time I've questioned him, as I expect you to do, and he has had his answers. He's had good answers. The man has some very collectible automobiles. Two of them are so valuable, they really aren't stored on the driveway, and he is, he enjoys them. He has a job with the government that we can't talk about. He's one of those, those guys in the, in the world that's taking care of us. He's a very busy guy, and he's canceled a dinner this evening because you required that this hearing occur. That dinner was sponsored by Wynn Resorts, including a limousine to take his mother out for a birthday celebration. So it's inconvenient for him to come today, as it was in January, February, and March, as this is persisted. I called Tyler this morning, or this afternoon, and gave him the phone number at about one thirty, two o'clock, and asked him if he had ever contacted him. And he said, no, I hadn't had, didn't have his phone number. So I gave it to him. I don't know if that was all right with you, with Mr. Bivins, but I did, and I guess he didn't call it. The point here is that the man has the registrations for the car. I went through that with him, it's gotta be correct tags, has to be drivable, and I believe he's gonna tell you, he'll take you, any of you, for a ride, and any one of them, you pick which one you want to go for a ride in. They're all operable. So you really have no case here, but you spent a lot of staff time and letters with that phone call in the good old Villa Park way of, go see the citizen, just like the man said, if you got a complaint, come here and give it. Let's not waste staff time with this sort of thing, including mine, to hear his lengthy story of the pains he suffered.
Good evening. My name's Ed Carter, I live at one zero zero seven one Feeling Drive. Mr. Bivins is a neighbor of mine, and I can't speak to the statute, whatever the rules are as far as setbacks and so forth and so on, but I just came because Mr. Bivins' cars don't bother me being there, I don't mind walking by him or seeing him, he seems like a fairly nice man, and I do feel bad about the fact that someone felt they needed to firebomb one of his cars. I think that regardless of the right or wrong of the situation, no one deserves that, so I hope this all works for the best, because he's a pretty nice guy. Thank you.
Thanks, Ed. Anyone else like to be heard?
Good evening. I am Charles G. Bivins, and one of the residents, the owners of the property, mentioned. I'm a car collector, those photographs, I must mention, are very, very old. The Jeep is not mine, the Jeep was from the city manager in New York, and he asked for his daughter was going to college and asked if he could have it. I'd like to address the current, the issue that was brought up in two thousand and six, I just was privy to that information, about it's been continuing according to Mr. Valentine. I had contacted the police via the directive of the current code enforcement officer in the city to coordinate with the sheriff's department. Contacted the sheriff's department, and as courtesy of the sheriff's department, I will not make their comments known, but they weren't very pleasant. I tried to resolve the issue, and I spoke to the watch commander. The watch commander took his time, he went and sent someone over to investigate. He called me back, and he said, sir, I find no problem with your property, and he was going to notify the city, evidently you have either lost it, or it was not recorded, but that is documented proof. Car covers were on the cars because we had inclement weather. I do have a vast array of cars, but they're not all there, and at the moment, I believe there's only three or four. They're all licensed, registered, insured, and operational. Some are quite valuable, and I really feel like this is an infringement on my constitutional rights. I have driven the town, I also had fellow Marines, several Marines drive around, saw Christmas sites to this day on residences, as well as cars being on cinder blocks, as well as being held up with rocks, so they don't roll back. Evidently, I'm being singled out. Now, I heard that there was one complaint filed this year. The Villa Park Boat Parade drives right in front of my home, and I do decorate it nice, I do have the wounded warriors come over for Christmas celebration. Many of them come from poorer families, so I like to do it a little nice for them. Every occasion, virtually every float, and I have it on record on my phone, awesome cars, sir, we love them, we love your Christmas lights, sir. Everything is awesome, for two years consecutively. Furthermore, I am chairman of the Rolls Royce Owners Club. I introduced the Phantom with Rolls Royce, Rolls Royce Murakai's, Rolls Royce Beverly Hills, Louis Vuitton, et cetera. I'm very well credentialed with automotive world, I'm a Concorda elegance judge, I was certified in nineteen ninety-seven. I judge Palm Beach, I judge Pebble Beach, et cetera. I know automobiles like the back of my hand. That's a rare exception, that property does not look like that now. After the firebomb on my car, it was a very rare Bill Blast edition, more so than a normal Bill Blast, because that was Mr. Blast's personal car. I brought dinner over to my handicapped mom, who was staying with my sister, and my neighbor texted me that there's a serious situation going on at my residence, to come over immediately. The car was destroyed, the entire vehicle. My cars are all operational, they always have been operational, and if someone has a problem with it, I would have appreciated a little courtesy to come over, to give a little more family heritage. My dad, Gia Lewis, and quite a few other people built Villa Park. I've always liked Villa Park, I remember it was identified as the rural, Orange County's rural rich haven, and it had the stats to prove it across the country. I brought some of my awards, I won the lifetime achievement award for the Rolls Royce. I'm such a bad guy, they don't award this, especially to somebody my age. I also won the class act trophy at the Villa Park High School Car Show in the past. It was my chairmanship for the Rolls Royce Owners Club. I want to be a good neighbor, I am a good neighbor, I'm a neighbor to all my neighbors, I approach them, if they have a problem, no. My neighbors have approached me, sir, my child's getting married or have an anniversary, would you mind driving over your cars? And I have. Unfortunately, I had such short time, I was just notified about a week and a day ago by a little piece of paper on a stake, that the meeting was held on the twenty-second, apparently, of April. I wish I would have come to that meeting, because perhaps it wouldn't have had to get to this level. I want to work with people, I do work with people. My cars are entered in various car shows, not only through, in Pebble Beach or wherever, I have more cars, I mean, the covered cars I mentioned earlier, and I believe Mr. Szelzal succinctly put it, as discreetly as possible. I don't understand what the situation is. That's not the way the residence looks now, and that was due to inclement weather. I truly have addressed, I do have all the registrations right here, but it is a matter of confidentiality, it's all of my vehicle identification numbers that are, I mean, I have them all, there's quite a few, I do own close to cars. This is the car that was torched, it was burned up. Were you there, sir? The roof is ripped up, which I never received a police report. It's a Bill Blast edition, the roof alone costs ten thousand dollars. The interior is probably another good ten thousand dollars. Somebody wants to make a point, I don't know who they are, if they wish... Somebody wants to make a point, I don't know who they are, if they wish to make an point honestly, why am I proud to be being here? I have to prove something, that I'm, I'm doing something as a United States citizen. And these people come and report anonymously, I find that most interesting. If someone, I spoke to the fire department, they said, "We love your cars, they're awesome cars, sir." And I wanted to just get objective viewpoints of people who don't live in the area, to see if it looks different, because somebody, evidently someone, has a vendetta, a personal vendetta. And I do have an issue with you calling my cars what you wrote in your letters. They're not that. None of them are. I do have photographs to show you. I've won countless trophies for my vehicles, there's more. I'm sorry. That hurts. If somebody wants to take a personal vendetta against me, that's unfortunate. I tried to maintain myself yesterday at Memorial Day ceremonies at Holy Sepulcher, but I was thinking about all my buddies that lost their lives. And you're sworn to uphold and protect the country of the United States from enemies both foreign and domestic, as always with the Constitution of the United States of America. So I lost 11 guys over there, and I did take issue, very big issue. I have a letter from a neighbor down the street who sent it anonymously. She asked me to maintain her confidentiality, and I will respect that. But she has a letter here saying that. There are no problems, she has no problems. All of my neighbors are approached, and they know I'm very approachable. And I, I don't, I really don't understand, an anonymous complaint...
Mr. Bivins, let me, let me, if I could interrupt you for just a second, 'cause I think we're kinda going over time.
I understand.
I, I really feel like this is kinda blown out of proportion, I've had this feeling for a while. So let me just cut to the chase of it, okay? I'm sorry that you have to deal with an anonymous complaint. I don't know what it is, the city has to address the issues. The city confronted it, sees a bunch of parked cars, and so they ask, "Hey, will you please show us registration, and just show us that they work, so that we know we don't have a violation, and we can be done with this?" And I know that's all that staff wants to do. So while I appreciate all the background you're giving us, it sounds like you have the registrations here.
Yeah, right here.
Our compliance individual is Taylor Valentine, or Tyler Valentine, or whoever here. So whether it's now, or whether it's, which, you know, or whether it's in the morning, whatever it may be, all we need to do, we don't need to see all this, I, you know, I'm not gonna, and I think it's a pity, I can't believe someone did this, this was totally uncalled for, but...
Thank God the Santa, pardon me, the Santa animals are blowing real bad around 9 o'clock, and this, I was called about between 11 and 12 midnight, and it was a miracle, the winds had stopped.
That, I mean, that's unacceptable, okay? But, and I, obviously, if we knew who did it, we'd deal with that. But, but this is a very simple matter that seems to have been blown out of proportion.
I agree with you.
All, all the city rep needs to see is the reg certificates and ascertain that the cars run, and I think this is over. Correct me if I'm wrong.
That's it.
So, so we're...
This is about six years, right?
Yeah, the, the problem is, I looked at the file, the letters go out, but it never seems to get resolved. So if you could just show them the titles and make arrangements to let them just come see that the cars are operative, they can sign off, and we're done.
You don't have to give them the VIN numbers.
Is that right here?
So you don't, you don't...
I have them.
The license numbers are on there, so, yeah, so I, I don't know that now's the appropriate time to do it, but, you know, I presume we could set something, can we just see, you know, you could just set it up?
I'll respect, I have them here if you...
Yeah, I mean, that's, but...
You know, it, it won't do anything, unfortunately, we need to see that they're operable. Just because they're registered doesn't mean that they drive.
Yes.
And, and I, I understand your background, I really do, this could've been resolved in a matter of 10 minutes, back yet the end of January. I, I think it is a giant waste of time personally.
Well, I also have a little guy who has cancer that I am taking care of, and he had his kidney removed, and he's in chemotherapy, and I have to address that. I have an ill parent who is on insulin, whom I rescued 25 times, going down into diabetic shock. I have many, many busy things in my life that I have to do. I also did the Ronald Reagan exhibitions, and I'm also helping them with future things. I did the car shows up there. I'm very well respected in the automotive world, and it's amazing how an anonymous complaint can cause all this.
Mr. Bivins, I, I don't wanna, I gotta keep the council meeting going. If you can merely allocate 10 or 15 minutes during the day when the city's open, we can have city staff go to your house for 10 minutes, take a look at the car, you can start them up, they can take a look at the sheets, and I think this is over. I, I, this is, I'm really sorry you had to come down, I'm really sorry the city had to waste all the time that maybe they've wasted on this. But that will resolve it, 10 minutes at your house, and this is done. So...
Mr. Mayor, if I could say something here, just about two months ago, we did have another incident at another home, in which that person is well-known in our community and does a lot for our community, and we did the same thing. The staff needed to know whether or not the car was registered, and whether or not the car was drivable. And so we kinda have to treat a residence a little equally, that if we're making someone, you know, on patrician do that, and I'm just using that street arbitrarily, if we make them prove to us that it worked because some complaint, we've got to follow the same rules. All you need, if, I would suggest that we allow another 30 days for an appointment to be made, so that code enforcement can go out, see if the vehicles are in working order, look at the registration to see if it's current, and report back to council at that time, and clear it up, if it can be cleared up.
Is that a motion?
That's a motion that I would make. I extend it 30 days.
I will second that motion. Mr. Bivins, do you understand what we're doing? She, she's proposed that we merely continue this hearing for 30 days, so that you can get together with staff for 10 minutes, show them what they need to do, and then presumably, at the next hearing, this will disappear.
Why? I, I, I agree with you, and I, I'm willing to do that, it just...
Really, I don't know what else we can do, we're kinda stuck, so...
I, I understand, but will I ask a favor that we, I'm gonna ask you to review these anonymous complaints, so they don't make a living nightmare for people? Because we don't know who, this, this person's a ghost.
I don't know that we know either, if it's anonymous.
And so I'm the one having to jump through hoops to take time off?
We don't, I don't need you to jump through hoops, if you would just, just...
10 minutes, it's resolved.
You know, just show them the registration, and show that the cars are operable, and it's not an issue.
I think Mr. Bivins brings up a very good point about this anonymity of this complaint, it should be, this should be revealed.
It would be.
From now on. Let's fix this problem, I think from now on is right.
Can we take the vote on that, I think?
Is this, yeah.
Can we go ahead and take the vote on that, and...
I appreciate that. Vote on to continue the matter?
Yeah, continue for 30 days, and then he can...
30 seconds.
I, I second it.
Mr. Mayor, before...
Go on, go ahead, counsel.
Mayor Protan, would you mind modifying your, your motion to continue specifically to a date certain, which is June 24th? Because in order to continue a public hearing, you actually have to specify the date, so that we don't have to renotice it.
Okay, so what's the date, then?
So it's, I believe that the next council meeting is June 24th.
Okay, so my motion is to continue this until June 24th, to allow the homeowner and staff to get together and resolve this by showing that their cars are operable and are registered properly.
Second.
Okay, and, you know, Mr. Bivins?
Yes, Mrs. Bivins.
You're, you're dear, and you've lived in this city forever, and I, I just appreciate you so much. And, and I actually do hear you, you're, you're minding your own business, someone lodges an anonymous complaint, and suddenly, you're having to prove something. But, you know, we, we do have a standard in the city, that we don't want a bunch of inoperable cars, you know, you know, left up on blocks and things of this nature. And, and the simple matter, when we, we spoke on the phone, all you need to do is just show them the registration, and it goes away. But I, but I hear that you, you know, there's the principle of the thing.
Right, there's the 14th amendment.
I, I absolutely get that, I absolutely get that, and so perhaps we need to review that. My other concern, so I'm, I'm hoping it will just go ahead and do that, so this can go away.
I hope so, because it, it was my understanding to the, the gentleman in charge of the sheriff's department, he said it's all been resolved, and now I'm seeing things brought up from 2006.
Well, all that needs to happen is you get with the city staff, do it tomorrow, and just get it over with, and they'll come to you when, when it's convenient for you during the day. My other concern is this outstanding balance on citations and late payment penalties of $80,000 that's been accrued. If this, yes, and it's, it's amazing to me that it got to that point before it ever came to us, that's a large chunk of money. I'm hoping that once he, that, that this goes away.
It will.
That simply.
That's simple?
Okay.
All right, you wanna take the vote?
I'm, I'm ready, I'm prepared to support the motion.
Vote is to continue to June 24th to resolve the matter. Mayor Protan Fasenelli?
Yes.
Mayor Barnett?
Yep.
Councilman Reese?
Yes.
Councilman Polley?
Yes.
Councilman Mills?
Thank you. And I'd like to have some input when you review on these anonymous complaints, because I do have a background that's rather important, and I could shed some light.
If I may speak to that procedure, if a complaint comes in over the telephone, we don't have a record of it, unless we write it down, the complaintee's name and address, half the time, they don't wanna give it to us. If it comes in via a written note, a fax, an airplane air written message in the sky, who knows? We'll have a, we'll have a document of that, or an email will have document of that, in which case, it constitutes a public record.
Well, in that case, I think if it's no name, no, no action, period.
In, in all candor, although I, I understand Mr. Bivins' frustration under the circumstances, assuming the cars are as stated, and I...
They are.
I believe they are, I'm, I'm taking your word for it, that they are. I understand your frustration, by the same token, I, I've also confronted people that are frustrated about numerous issues in the city, that don't wanna stir issues with their neighbors, they want the city to take care of it, because it's an ordinance, and it's supposed to be done, and they don't want the friction personally. Not my style, but a lot of people do have that, they don't want the confrontation, and they do it anonymously. So whether I agree with it or not, it happens a lot, because I've had, I've had people come to me in...
You know what, though? If I could just, you know, you're an attorney, and I, I totally get that, which puts you, you know, ahead in this whole thing. But, but when we're doing these sorts of hearings, this is kind of quasi judicial kind of thing, yes? So in, in any normal court of law, somebody who's being accused of something has a right to confront their accuser, correct? So to me, I would like to see us come back with this particular ordinance that talks about how we handle code enforcement, policy, whatever it happens to be, and let's review it, discuss it, and decide whether there needs to be some modifications and changes. I would like to see that in a council meeting after budget. So let's say, let's say, like, July, can we do that?
Let me, let me do...
Anything, it's my busy season, we're losing our code enforcement officer.
I totally get that.
Let me, let me...
I would like to see us, I would, we, we don't need to discuss it now.
But it's a great...
But we need to bring it back.
I give some...
I don't wanna do it in budget month, that's for sure.
It's budget month and election month, that's the only way, reason I say it's busy for me. But I mean, we can certainly bring it back to August or September, that's easily doable.
Okay, fine. At a, at a, before I get off the council, buddy.
No, absolutely. No, I mean, it'll give us time to find some example code enforcements, maybe categorize them and do a hazard schedule per se.
You're good, Mr. Bivins, you don't have to put up...
I'm just looking at it from a military standpoint, that if you're sent on a mission, you have to have, right, Deborah, you have to have it. You don't go on a mission, you don't send out the SEALs.
One of the, frankly, here's, here's, one of the, here's one of the problems, frankly. Let's say someone has a neighbor that's got a dead yard, okay? And they, they like the people, and they can't stand the dead yard, they're afraid it's depreciating their property, blah, 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 it's getting some rats. But it's one of their friends, and they want it cleaned up, they really don't wanna create a lot of friction, so they call it in. City drives by, here's a dead yard in violation of the code, okay? Do they, does it really matter who turned it in? That, that's the other argument, okay? I, I appreciate what you're saying.
But we should have that, we should save that conversation for later.
And I appreciate what you're saying, but we understand...
Have we voted? Have we voted?
Yeah, we voted, it's done, he's clear.
So we can move to the next item.
May I ask you a question after?
Sure.
Because it has to do with something that...
Sure.
It's pertinent to this, but I don't want it out.
Yeah, that's, that's fine, but I just wanna let you know, you, you don't have to stand here and take any more of this, you can, you can put your, your wings in the box, and you're free.
How can I get your contact information?
I wanna make a comment here, though.
All our cards are for it.
Let me, I'd like to make a comment here, that I'm supporting what the staff has done here, and this didn't just come to us. Okay, this has been here for some time.
Okay, thank you.
It's been here, it's been here for some time. Notices have been mailed, this could've been taken care of with some communication between the homeowner and the city, so, and we have been notified of this, that's why it's come to this point. So I just wanna make sure that we all understand that, this is not something that...
We've dealt with, it takes two to tango here, so we'll get it resolved. On to the next item here, people.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Bivins, for coming down and getting in touch with us, this hopefully will get it resolved. Item number three, and I'm not gonna read it this time, I'm gonna ask for staff report on it, and you can read it, and we'll save some time.
Yes, of course, this is consideration of ordinance number 2014-585, amending Article 5-11 of the Villa Park Municipal Code pertaining to loitering and trespassing. This is the town center's loitering and trespassing ordinance, it's coming back to you for a second reading tonight. Staff recommends that the city council hold a public, hold a public hearing, approve a second reading, and adopt such ordinance, and in doing so, we must waive the title and reading by full. Although that's not written in the staff report. We're available for any questions.
Staff, or council, any questions of staff? Does the public have any comments on this ordinance? There appearing to be none, do we now take another vote on it?
I'll be glad to make the motion.
Second.
Well, it has to be read in full, that we pass the second reading of ordinance number 2014-585, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Villa Park, amending Article 5-11 of the Villa Park Municipal Code pertaining to loitering and trespassing. Is that what you needed?
And that you waived the reading in full of the ordinance and approved it by title only, which is what you just read into the record.
Councilman Polley?
Yes.
Councilman Mills?
Thank you very much, Mr. Bivins.
Councilman Reese?
Yes.
Mayor Protan Fasenelli?
Yes.
Mayor Barnett?
Okay, item four is presentation of the 2014 residential survey results, so do we have a presentation on that?
Yeah, I have a PowerPoint which is pulling up, hopefully, but the surveys were sent out in April, and we mailed them to approximately 2,020 homes here in Villa Park, and we received, can you unplug yours? And we received... Oh, mine's not opening up. So I'll go to my PowerPoint. We received 307 responses which are tallied in these actual numbers, which is an actual response rate of about 15%. I am extremely satisfied with that.
That's pretty good.
As the past surveys, we received only 3 or 4%. So 307, and I probably have another 30, 40, I don't even worry about it. I probably have another 30 or 40, which we haven't even calculated, is, is just outstanding. Overall, the quality of life in Villa Park, people rated, 77% of respondents rated it as an excellent place to live, and 20% rated it as good. The characteristics which they seemed to like the most were the community spirit, the overall appearance, cleanliness, car travel, air quality, natural environment, and general reputation. If you'd like, I can spend five minutes, put the PowerPoint up, but we went back and forth, so...
I think we've probably all read it, so unless there's some members of the public that want to see the survey results, I suggest we just weigh it.
The survey results will be available online, and a couple of things to work on would be recreational opportunities and services to seniors. Yep.
I did note, I guess Mr. Bivens is gone, but I did note one of the weakest points, it was a very good favorable study. Probably the weakest point was the city's enforcement of ordinances and property conditions such as we just dealt with here. So it's clearly an issue that the public wants addressed more than any other thing I saw on the list.
Or at least the 15 percent who responded.
Right.
The other 85 percent probably could care less. But I did have one question, and I'm not sure if you had an opportunity to get an answer from the intern who dealt with it, and that had to do with, I reviewed as many of the surveys as I could get through, and there were a lot. And I noticed that on many of them, with regard to the bond measure question, sometimes they'd mark yes, and then they'd read that bottom sentence, and then they'd mark out no, or then they'd put to the side, "I don't know," or "I need more information." And there were quite a number of them that had no opinion, so I was wondering, I'd asked you how those had been counted, and you said you'd have to find out.
They were classified as nos.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
This is related to the school bond measure. Are you in favor of it or not?
That was my only question.
I have to make one comment. I did read all 307, 10. I sat in here for a few hours and read all the comments, because without reading the comments, you really don't get the background behind it, and the bond measure happened to be one of them. But there were some wonderful comments from the residents, and they took the time to write paragraphs, and to be specific about the things that they loved about our city, and they liked the city. They like living here. They like that it's clean. They like that it's friendly. They feel safe. There was very little negativity. The school traffic was one of the negativities that they say there. Unfortunately, that all they say is between the hours, you have 7:30 and 8:00, and then again, between the hours is 2:30 and 3:00. In between there, they like that. One of the items that I just want to point out, though, that was a little disturbing to me is that nobody likes our library. Nobody uses it, according to this survey, so I'm a little curious. I'm wondering who's using the library, because 15 percent of our residents don't use, I mean, 73 percent of the survey said they don't use it. So, um- There is. I'm not sure if it's our residents or not, no. So that's just a comment.
Most of them are not. I know that from coming in, when they're having child hour, I'll pop in and, "So, are you having fun?" You know, "How many of you live in Villa Park?" Nobody raises their hand. "Okay, I'm glad you're having fun," but, you know.
And those are the things you learn from these type of surveys, as to where maybe, you know, money needs to be spent and so on. So just something I want to bring up here. We have a nice library if anybody wants to use it.
Any other comments on that? No? All right, Jared, do we need a motion on this?
Just receive and file.
Just receive and file, okay. That brings us on to the consent calendar, items five to eight. Who would like to pull what from the consent calendar?
I just would like to pull item six, please. The financial treasurer's report for the month of April.
I actually didn't have to ask. Okay, well, all right, well, let's go to item six. Better yet, should we just move the other items?
I want to pull item eight.
Okay. All right, so. Okay, can we move items five and seven?
I'll move it.
Jared?
Councilman Pauli?
Yes.
Councilman Reese?
Yes.
Councilman Mills? Mayor Protem Fasenelli?
Yes.
Mayor Barnett?
Yes.
So on to item number six. Go ahead, Deborah.
It's just a real quick thought that I'd like to toss out. This is the treasurer's report of cash on deposit and veteran investment. We're in great shape, that's for sure, and I just love the fact that we've got these laddered CDs, and that we're ensuring that we're making those investments with a variety of financial institutions. I think that's a wonderful thing. I'm wondering, and Michelle, up where it says cash on deposit, WF Wells Fargo Cash Bank Deposit Sweep, is that going to be hanging out there forever? Is there a reason for that to still stay there?
Yeah, it just depends on if we get interest right before, like, a month end.
Yeah.
And they haven't cut us a check yet.
Yes.
So as of the end of the month, we saw every once in a while we'll have, like, an $800, $1,000, $1,200. So it's just as a placeholder, because last month, I think, we had $800 in it until the check was cut, like, on the third. So it's just kind of, I leave it there as a placeholder.
So we have that much money in the balance of our checking account?
Well, not in our checking account. In our cash, in all of our accounts, yes.
Okay, because it's earning some interest.
Oh, yeah.
Okay. The other thing I'd like to just toss out for consideration, not necessarily for you, but perhaps for the folks that handle, you know, the Investment Advisory Committee, is where we're putting our life funds, you know, when we put money in life. And we've got a standard that's been set that we're never going to have more than 80 percent of the total of our investments in life, because it's such a low interest-bearing, you know, place to store your money. And we never have, I mean, it's been a long time since we've had even, like, 30 percent. I mean, it's always quite low. So I'm wondering if perhaps that should be adjusted in some fashion, where it really reflects more what we're actually doing, instead of having it set at 80 percent, or is that some kind of state requirement?
It's, we have, we are required to be in compliance with the government code.
Yes.
And we take the government code, and then we taper back what the city wants. Yes, that can be changed. We look at it every year. We actually, our next meeting in July, we will be addressing it, and we have potentially another opportunity to invest in a medium to long term that we're, I think we're going to go from, which will bring the percentages down even further, and potentially, that's a great recommendation, just to bring it down to, you know, maybe more like the 30, 30 percent.
Right, right.
Keep it at-
You know, I've been tracking all of this, and I've noticed where it's been sitting, and so my suggestion is that you just go ahead and make it so and so. You don't have to continually, you know, give us a footnote on an item that, you know, it never even approaches that. So that's the only reason I pulled it, was to make that quick suggestion.
For what it's worth-
Yes?
The Investment Advisory Committee beats these debt issues to death.
I'm sure they do.
Every time they get together.
But that can be changed, and it probably should be changed to reflect the reality of what we're doing. I'll be glad to move the item unless someone else has something they'd like to mention.
Second.
This is a receiving file. We can move on to the number eight.
Okay, thank you.
All right, item number eight, Deanna.
It looks like we've got a new treasurer for the foundation, and that would be Mrs. Lucero, and that's wonderful. I'm very glad that somebody stepped up. I did read the minutes that were sent to us, and it appears that there were also two other people who applied to be treasurer, but the minutes didn't reflect that, who they were. And I'm wondering if anyone here knows who they were. They didn't reflect it, and it's a question that I would like answered from the foundation. In addition to that, I just want some follow-up. Since the foundation is still part of the city, I want to make sure that now that Mr. Nelson is not the treasurer, that we make, we change, that the signature cards are done appropriately, and that, you know, he's removed from the particular accounts, that he doesn't have any liability coming on, and that MJ gets to sign our cards, and make sure that we know what's going on over there. I'm happy that somebody finally stepped up. It's been a, it's been a long haul trying to get a treasurer there. But I would like to know who the other two people were, who did apply to be treasurer. If you could find that out for me, it'd be great.
I also think it would be appropriate for us to, in some fashion, thank Mr. Nelson, because he agreed to stay on until they found a new treasurer. And he certainly did not have to do that. He was tired. You can only do that kind of job for so long. But I would like for us to extend some sort of appreciation to him.
He was extremely diligent.
And very-
He was, very.
He did a great job. So if you're watching, Bill, thank you very much. You've done an outstanding job, and we very much appreciate it.
No doubt.
That said, I have a question, Jared, or whoever can answer this, if you can remind me perhaps, in case I once knew. What is the legal structure of the foundation, and why are we, yeah, council, I guess is the one it goes to. What's the legal structure, and why are we appointing the officer here to act as the treasurer?
When the foundation incorporated in 2002 and 2003, it was the city that actually drew up the paperwork. And when the bylaws were created, the city named themselves the members of the foundation. So that's the government structure, the board of directors.
Is this not a corporation? It's, what is it?
It's a corporation.
If it's a corporation, and it's got directors?
The city council is the members, and then there are directors of the corporation, so the directors report to the city council.
There's only directors and shareholders in a corp-, oh, excuse me, I'm sorry. It's a nonprofit. Yeah, yeah.
If you recall, about a year ago, I brought that to the council, because I felt that we had-
That's why I asked to be reminded, because I had a feeling I'd been told. So it's a charitable corporation, and the members in lieu of the shareholders, the city is the sole member, or the board, or the city council are the members? Is that what it is? City council are actually the members of the corporation, and so the board, the board is appointed by the city council. But the treasurer as an officer, wouldn't they be elected by the board?
They are elected by the board. So you are appointing MJ Lucero to the board of directors, and then amongst themselves, much like the city council does with the mayor, Mayor Protem, they'll elect their own officers.
Okay, so we're putting, I see this, okay.
They're doing as kindly, making us aware of what they intend to do with her, you know, that this is their decision.
I appreciate that, okay.
I do think it's good that the way this is structured, remain that way, the way that the Villa Park Community Services Foundation is structured, stay that way. They're acting on behalf of the city quite often. The city's name is involved in it, and they're doing, you know, they're essentially our de facto Parks and Recs department, since we don't have one.
So all we do is appoint the directors, and then the entity operates. Do you want to move the item?
Yes. I moved the item.
Second.
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Yes, aye.
opposed? Hearing none, motion carries.
Okay. On we go to item nine, and this is the election issue, so we'll get a report from staff, I guess.
This is consideration of the resolutions pertaining to the general municipal election on Tuesday, November 4th. There are several resolutions before you. The first one is calling the election for the purpose of electing three members of the city council. As we know, Councilman Pauli and Councilman Reese will be termed out of office and are no longer eligible to run. And Mayor Protem Fasenelli was appointed to the two-year seat after Councilman Foter passed away. She will be eligible to run this next election. The next resolution before you is 3273, which calls the election for the purpose of submitting the question to the voters regarding sale and use of safe and sane fireworks. And then the city attorney formatted it in such a way where the resident voters will approve fireworks, yes or no, and the city council still has the power and authority to regulate such a matter. So if we want to change restrictions in the future, the city council has that power to do so, and it does not have to go to a vote. We'll only have to go to a vote to ban sale and use of fireworks again. The next resolution, 3274, request consolidation with the county board of supervisors. The total estimate for the election with one ballot measure is 15,000. And I did learn throughout this budget process, that the cost for actually the ballot measure went up. It's about $8,000 now. It goes off the number of registered voters, and how many languages you have to translate candidate's statement into, and this and that. So it's about $8,000 for the election itself, and then another 8,000 for, or, sorry. Cheaper for the election, more expensive for the ballot measure. 3275 establishes regulations pertaining to candidate statements. 3276 authorizes the city council to file arguments in favor of or against the ballot measure concerning fireworks, and it directs the city attorney to prepare the impartial analysis. And then the last resolution before you is 3277, which adopts provisions for rebuttal arguments. As I stated, the cost is approximately $15,000, and that will be budgeted next year. And staff recommends that the city council adopt these resolutions. Now, unfortunately, we will have to take them one by one, so we have some time.
Council have questions of staff?
Quick question. So on the fireworks, I'm just curious. If it is passed, and we have some issues with fireworks, council can, at their discretion, unpass it, if you will?
No.
No.
I guess I misunderstood.
If it is passed, only the voters can ban it. If the voters approve it, the voters have to ban it.
I thought you said council could interact.
Council has authority to regulate it, such as the hours operation, the number of temporary stains we authorize.
Okay, that was my question. Thank you.
Greg, you had something over there? No? Okay.
I have, I have one question, just so that I understand this clearly. It's having to do with the arguments against and for that particular resolution. Does this mean that council members have first crack at lodging those? Okay. And if council members do not write it, then other citizens or organizations?
Yeah, it's set a priority.
Okay.
So that if council wants to make an argument, the council gets the first crack at it. But if that if council doesn't want to do it, and a community organization wants to do it, then they would be next in line.
Second in line?
Yeah.
If an individual citizen wished to do it, would they then be third in line?
Yeah.
If an actual declared organization, that means something that's filed with the FPPC, that's what that actually means?
Or-
No, it could be an individual resident voter of the city. So city council has first priority as a whole.
Yes.
And then a collective group of the city council, and then bona fide organization, which would be your, you know, your controlled committee.
Okay.
And then individual resident voter.
Okay, thank you.
And if it's an organization's liability, everything else, correct?
Yeah. Filed with the Secretary of State.
And the deadlines for submitting those arguments would be?
They actually run, they're based on submittal, there's an open period when the ordinance becomes public, and it's based on submittal to the ROV, the registrar of voters. The drop dead date for ordinances, for ballot measures generally, is actually, we're ahead of the game here. So I think it's actually-
It's, sorry.
August was the drop dead, but based on when Jared submits the resolutions, that's when the-
It starts the clock.
It starts the clock.
But filing doesn't open, filing is different. Filing is July to August, July 14th to August 8th.
Right.
But-
Sorry, I have hundreds of dates.
I'm sure you do.
Turning the elections full up in my head, so.
But it's rare for us. We've only put one other measure on the ballot since my time on the council, and that was the "in God we trust" one. So my understanding of how that operates is a little fuzzy.
I'm relearning this as well, as we go through this.
The election code regulates, so there's, so, once Jared provides the resolutions to the ROV and opens the ballot measure for public review, there is, I think it's a 10-day span to submit, is that right?
It's a seven to 10-day window, and the city can set it. So the public notice will go out in the next week, calling the election. I have to do public notices for the election, then public notices for the ballot measure. Once the public notices go out for the ballot measure, it starts a seven to 14-day window. I'm going to just give it 14 days, for the submittal of the ballot measures, or arguments in favor or against. After that 14 window closes, there's another 10-day window for court action in case, you know, somebody says something that they don't like. And then there's another window for the rebuttal arguments. There's a fancy calendar sitting on my desk in a four-inch ring binder.
So I can see why you don't want any additional work in July. Yeah, you're going to have fun. But you would not be filing that notice for the ballot measure prior to the opening of the filing period for candidates, or would you?
It can, yes.
Oh, so you could do it, like, today?
I could do it today. I could do it tomorrow.
Okay.
The registrar of voters set the absolute last day, and I believe it's August 8th or August 10th, for arguments, and that's just so they can translate them. I'd personally rather open it sooner rather than later, just so we're not inundating the registrar of voters near the end.
I agree. Okay, thank you for that clarification.
Any other questions? Well, then I've got one. So the first priority for the wording in favor of the ballot is given to the city council as an entity? Is that my understanding? And that lasts for how long? It's exclusive for how long?
Well, it's, so you set the provisions with the resolution. Say you had a ballot measure in the future, you can redo those provisions. So this just runs for this election in 2014.
So, but my question still is, what is the time, the exclusive timeframe that the city council has to that language before another layer is invited to?
Seven to 14 days.
And you set that when you file?
Is the deadline. We set that when we file and prepare the notice of election and et cetera.
It seems to me that that's a fairly short period, and if it's council has the first opportunity to do that, you know, it seems as though council ought to try and come together and figure out how and who is going to write that, and how it would be approved, unless council wants to defer to a third-party entity to get it done.
Or if the council is split, not everyone's going to be writing a statement in support of. And from what I understand, only individuals who are legally qualified to vote on this particular measure are allowed to in any way be signatories or write the item. It has to be those who can vote on the item.
Is that the case, council?
Yeah, that's the case.
So it can only be written by a local registered voter?
In Villa Park.
Yeah. In Villa Park. So, for example, the city manager couldn't write it if he didn't reside in Villa Park?
Yeah, it's a qualified voter that can vote on the measure. Jared and I were just discussing the council's desire to submit an argument for or against. There's a Brown Act issue, obviously, so, um-
I guess, maybe I'm-
We could do the timing such that Jared could-
We can try and coordinate it with the budget study session that we have in two weeks.
Well, I guess the question-
Or we can appoint an ad hoc committee and just assign two council members.
Or do we even want to do it? I mean, I'm more concerned, I guess, about the, there's an independent statement that's written by what, council?
The impartial analysis by the city attorney.
That's more what I'm focused on, I guess, is the impartial, and that's going to be done by council.
We don't do that at all.
Yeah.
Yeah, so we don't have anything to do with it. So we're going to get an impartial analysis of the, of the-
Of the measure.
Of the measure. Yeah.
Done by council. So then it's just an issue, I guess then the question is, do we get involved at all in the for or against? I don't even know that-
If you do, that's a political matter, and you wouldn't be doing that as a council, as a council, so you would be doing that as individual council members, leaders of the community.
Right.
And it's not something that you would be taking official action on. It's something that you would be doing privately, but you would be having the ability to use your mayor name. "I'm the mayor, and I say this is awesome," you know, whatever you're going to say.
So whoever proceeds, if a council member proceeds-
It's getting late.
If a council member proceeds with this, and does it for, you know, advocate statement, is that the end of it? I mean, it blocks all the other, really? And what if three council members- And, and what if three council members come up with four statements? What does that do?
Then hopefully you, you get together collectively and write one statement and agree to that.
Without a Brown Act?
Right, so we'd have to, uh, manage.
I wanna make it clear, I'm not, I frankly, I'm not planning on doing this, I'm just, I'm just trying to understand it.
This is sticky wicket this one.
So I guess the bottom.
It's, it's rather interesting how it's all set up.
Yeah.
It's very sticky and it's slippery, so.
So there, there'll, there needs to be a public notice that goes out so that parties are aware of what's out there and the timeframes and, and what's going on.
Yeah.
And they're standard boilerplate, public notice, uh, resolutions. Martin and Chapman is the election consultant company that we use. They produce that binder which you've seen on my desk, and tomorrow I'll open it up and I'll start prepping everything.
Okay, well, I don't know what more we can do with that, I guess there's no action for us on that, is there?
Okay, so, so we have to do these one at a time, so do we need, I mean, we obviously have no choice but to do this because it needs to happen, so, but we have to take them one at a time? Is there something else that we need to know?
Confirming that the ordinance, just, you know, last time, if it's voted on, it's final, the voters.
So Exhibit A to Resolution three-two-seven-three is, this is the ordinance that the voters will actually see and vote on, and that language will actually become the language of the municipal code. And this is what it authorizes, it's authorizing the voters to, well, the voters are both saying yes or no to the use, sale, and purchase of fireworks in the city, and they are simultaneously giving the council the authority to regulate that use, and that, just wanted to ma, that's how this is prepared. So if that is, we wanted to clarify council's desire on that. Cause once it goes to the voters, an ordinance that goes to the voters can only be undone by the voters.
You know, I, I, I just really feel like it should be a little bit more straightforward. Just saying, shall the sale, purchase, and use of safe and sane fireworks within the city of Villa Park? Oh, then you would have to cut it into two pieces.
Are you talking about the election question?
Yes, I'm talking about how it will actually read.
The question itself is actually, the format of the question is governed by the elections code. So we actually have to say it in this, shall the ordinance be adopted?
Okay.
Format, and it needs to be a single subject, and so that's.
But it really isn't a single subject, it's two subjects.
Well, it's a single subject in that the voters are approving fireworks subject to council for future regulation. That, so that's really the vote.
Right, but I think it's really vitally important that they understand that once this passes, the only way it can go, be undone is to go back before the voters to undo it.
Right.
And that means that the council would have to approve it, or that the citizens would have to go through quite a significant effort.
Yeah.
Uh, uh, not just one of your, you know, Villa Parkway petitions, but a real petition, uh, which is a very different matter altogether than what we're accustomed to accepting. Um, I, I just think that that's gonna, that will be laid out, I'm assuming, in the independent analysis.
The impartial analysis.
And the additional costs that would be incurred.
Well, so there'll be an explanation that a voter initiated, or sorry, that a ballot measure that's submitted to the voters can only be repealed by the voters. But it's, the initial, sorry, the impartial analysis is limited to, I believe, five hundred words.
Mm-hmm.
So there's not a whole lot of explanation if I also have to explain the ordinance at the same time. So getting into explanation as to future costs may be problematic for that.
Okay.
But also, once, once it passes, then it also is the city council to regulate it. They can regulate it very, very tough, so nothing can happen anyway. So that's actually, there can be pressure for them to regulate it to nothing, basically.
Right, it, you couldn't go to the level of eliminating, if the voters approve fireworks, you couldn't regulate it to the extent of.
Eliminating.
De facto eliminating it.
Exactly.
Um, but it.
I wanted to make sure that was clear.
Yeah.
That's an important feature, and so there's recourse.
As, as soon as they say yes, it's done deal.
Could be seriously restricted.
Regardless of how things turn out down the road.
Somebody wanna move this thing?
Well, we have to move them one at a time.
I understand.
All right, so, do we have to read the, the whole thing as we're talking about it? Thirty-two eighty? Okay, all right.
So what are, what are we doing here?
First one is Resolution number two thousand fourteen, calling the election for officers.
Thirty-two eighty-two. I'll second that.
Councilman Mills?
Yes.
Councilman Polly?
Yes.
Councilman Reese?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Fashionelli?
Yes.
Mayor Burnett?
Yes.
I have Resolution number two oh one four dash three-two-seven-three. I move to approve that.
Second.
Councilman Mills?
Yes.
Councilman Polly?
Yes.
Councilman Reese?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Fashionelli?
Yes.
Mayor Burnett?
Yes.
I also move, uh, also Resolution number two oh one four dash three-two-seven-four.
Second.
Councilman Mills?
Yes.
Councilman Reese?
Yes.
Councilman Polly?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Fashionelli?
Yes.
Mayor Burnett?
Yes.
I'd also like to move, uh, Resolution number two oh one four dash three-two-seven-five.
Second.
Councilman Mills?
Yes.
Councilman Polly?
Yes.
Councilman Reese?
Yes.
Councilman Fashionelli? Mayor Burnett?
Yes.
I'd like to move also Resolution number two oh one four dash three-two-seven-six.
Second.
Councilman Mills?
Yes.
Councilman Reese?
Yes.
Councilman Polly?
Yes.
Councilman Fashionelli?
Yes.
Mayor Burnett?
Yes.
I'd also like to move, uh, Resolution number two oh one four dash three-two-seven-seven.
Second.
Councilman Mills?
Yes.
Councilman Polly?
Yes.
Councilman Reese?
Yes.
Protem Fashionelli? Mayor Burnett?
Yes.
Thank you for helping that one. I believe that is it, and I'll carry it.
Okay, and we're off and running to item ten, which is our law enforcement contract. So do we have a staff report on that?
Would you like one given this late hour?
No, not particularly, and I've read it, so unless some of the other council has an issue with it, uh, I just have a question, so, does, does, does anybody wanna report on this?
I've read the report.
Okay, I have too, so it doesn't look like we're requiring a report, however, we do have some questions. I think Brad has a question.
Um, Jared, I had called you today and chatted about this a little bit. Did you have a chance to talk to Michelle about the school resource officer?
Yes, I did, and I will let her speak to the side.
So, so the question I had was, um, we love the school resource officer, we want it, it's been great. However, um, even though the majority of students that come to Villa Park schools are from Orange, Orange City and or OUSD wants nothing to do with helping us pay for it. Um, the question I had was, if we decided not to do it, which I doubt that will be the case, but I just had to ask, um, could the monies for the school resource officer be utilized to pay for maybe this increase? Because the monies for one year of the school resource officer, isn't it over a hundred thousand dollars or something of that nature?
The, the grant that, um, we are awarded is a hundred thousand, um, and that's been flat for several years.
So it's about a hundred grand for the school resource officer?
Well, that's the, the grant money that we receive. It's about eighty-five-ish, maybe ninety.
That's the cost of the school resource officer?
Correct, correct.
Okay.
Now.
Could that grant be utilized to pay?
No.
Care fees?
No, it's, it's supplemental, that's, it's called the SLEF?
Yeah, yeah.
Supplemental law enforcement.
Services fund.
Services fund.
Okay.
Yeah, so it has to be, it can't be your, your regular law enforcement, it has to be supplemental. So we use it for directed, um, traffic enforcement or, you know, another directed law enforcement purpose.
Extracurricular.
Exactly, so it's actually, how it's used, it's, it like backfills the deputy that is the SRO. So that's why it's not considered our regular deputy that's, that we're paying for. It's the backfill for that position.
So I would assume Orange has that same grant probably?
Oh, yeah.
And they just choose to use the money in other ways?
Exactly.
Got it.
We've like, we've used it for motorcycles, and I think they use it for, um, motorcycles as well. You can use it for motorcycles.
Right, any additional law enforcement, um, that you request, that's not your, you know, general services.
Okay.
Could it, could it be used towards then, um, like overtime, would that be?
Well, that's what it is, it's the overtime for the deputy, and that, they call it, isn't it backfill? Or isn't that what you call it? I think it's like the backfill of that overtime cost for the deputy that, cause we're having a deputy maintain this, the, the general services of the city.
Mm-hmm.
And so that additional officer can be an SRO specifically at the schools.
I, I understand what we're doing with it, but what I'm saying is, we've budgeted for X. We know what we're gonna get charged for the base level, you know, uh, but then we also, when we're budgeting, budget for, you know, overtime and other incidentals. Could any of that, does any of that money get shaved off to cover that overtime? Or special directed enforcement?
If it's special, if it's additional from your, um, routine general services, so yes. But it's, it, it can't just be used for overhead for your deputies. It's for a specific purpose, that's additional services that your city is.
Above and beyond the one million.
Right, it's not just, um, you know, right.
Most of our overtime comes by directed patrol, so in a roundabout way, yes, we.
So do, we do end up using then cops to fill the rest of it in, cause you're not using all the cops funds?
If, yeah, if, if you see, and right, we have a fund balance growing, and anytime we need additional services or we request, you know, above and beyond our contract, we use that money, we use that cops money for it.
Very good.
So we could, that money, if we didn't have an SRO, could use that money for the additional traffic officer that the residents are, are requesting.
We still have to qualify though for the grant, right?
But, but the only thing is if you have an additional traffic officer.
We don't have one.
I don't know how, I don't know how the calculation works out, but we get a good deal for an SRO versus an actual, another deputy, traffic, um, officer, I, I think you would be paying a lot of money for that.
The SRO is approximately.
I'm just looking at the options based on.
Right.
What is coming to us right now from the residents, so that we have a, a full answer for them when we give them a cost, that, that's all.
Right.
Yeah, I was just curious, cause you know, we're, we're looking at a nice little increase here, and granted, we love the SRO, no doubt, but you look at Orange, they choose not to have an SRO, they put it on the schools to handle it on their own, and if there's an incident, they call the cops, and the cops show up. Granted, we like our school resource officer, I think it's a benefit to our community, um, but I just wanted to look at any other options that, that money could be utilized for.
Right.
Um, cause it seems like if we spend eighty-five, the grant's a hundred, that gives us fifteen extra. Do we ever go over that fifteen on extracurricular things, or not really?
Well, one year we came pretty close, um, but that was just specific directed enforcement. And, um, we just, that extra has been built up in fund balance, because there was one year where we were not awarded the grant until like midway through the year, but we had enough fund balance to hold the SRO position and pay for it through, you know, um, built up fund balance for, I think it was six, maybe seven months until we, the, the state said, oh, just kidding, we're gonna take your vehicle license being paid for it.
So Michelle, pretending we didn't have an SRO and we get the grant.
Mm-hmm.
Um, does that money just sit in an account, a hundred grand?
Um, I, we have a lot of different, um, I, I think it's two years you have to spend it.
Mm-hmm.
So it would, yeah, it would say, it can only be used for, um, frontline law enforcement.
So maybe a new radar gun or just weird things?
Thousand dollar radar gun.
It has to do with cops, basically?
Yeah, it has to be supplemental law enforcement services. So it has to be, it can't be your routine replacing the one that you have. It, it, that would, that's not supplemental, that's replacing the one that you have that you need.
Yeah.
So if it's additional, if you, I, I don't know.
Have we analyzed if there are any other needs that we have that we would be using our normal money for? Like, you know what I'm saying? I mean, I wonder if we analyze that, because we already gotta pay all this extra money. Then if something else comes up, we'll have to dig into our dough, cause there's only fifteen grand left.
Right, well, that's something I can, um, sit down with, um, the town council and, and see, you know, what the deputies see out there, and you know, what we need and what we're lacking. I, I personally don't know.
I mean, I'm not trying to talk out of the school resource officer, I like it.
Sure.
But I also am looking at the money we're spending and just seeing if there's any way to juggle or whatever. Okay, thank you.
Would this apply to equipment or just labor?
Um, I think, I think you can use it for equipment.
I remember equipment too.
Um, I know CLEEP is only equipment.
Right.
It's merely, um, equipment, so we've used that for that purpose, but, um, I'm, I'm not sure if it, I, I, I think you can.
Are we running low in CLEEP funds that we need to?
We're starting to, we're starting to wind down.
Hmm.
I think you bring up a good point about the, the resource.
To look at it, yeah.
To look at it, um, I like having the resource officer, I think it's a wonderful benefit. Um, given the fact that we only have so much money, um, right now we're dealing with residents complaining about traffic issues. I mean, it's just, uh, and they want citations, but you can only be in one spot at one time, and we have four schools, and that's what they want. Um, I don't know if they'll like it if we ever give it to them, because everyone would be, you know, might be keen to do any citations, but we're at a con drill, cause I, I, that was a question that I, I posed today to the city manager. How much would it cost us to have a traffic person? Because, you know, there's only so much we can do. So now we kinda need to see where the money needs to be spent, um, based on the residents' concerns.
I think that, I'm just gonna kinda go back into the corporate memory here, and the reason that we went with the SRO is that when you looked at the call log during the school day, most of the calls during the school day were at one of the schools or another. You assume they're all at the high school, but they're not. But, um, and it, and that, and, and so if you, soon as you take that SRO out of that, out of that system, then our cop is, is spending all of their time at the schools, and we've got nobody patrolling our streets and nobody handling the streets. So I just wanna throw that out there before we get too far down the road on, I think it's good to look at and are determined whether or not we're making the best use of that funding, but I don't want us to lose sight of why we started doing it in the first place and how much it has alleviated, um, the sheriff's ability to actually do the job on the street. It's a, it's a problem, you know, the school sites are not ours, but many of the problems that the city has to deal with come from those school sites, and, and having that SRO really helped us on a number of fronts. Some of the things that we don't pay attention to, you know, issues that occur over the weekend in the city of Orange, you know, only eight percent of the students actually live in Villa Park. They're having their little neighborhood spat in Orange, and then it shows up, you know, on the school campus, uh, Monday morning. And the SRO, because they've already developed a relationship with the kids, a trusting relationship, you know, they let them know. And, and I think a lot of problems have been averted as a result of, of having that SRO. So I don't want us to lose sight of the benefits, the massive benefits of the SRO, so.
I have one question then, um, and I guess it's probably best to Lieutenant Gunsel, maybe. I noticed we have a half of an investigation unit for Villa Park. You know, we're down at point two-one percent of all these other people, and we've got a half of an investigation unit. Do we have enough activity here to really justify fifty percent of an investigator?
Uh, half of an investigator, yes, uh, there are enough crime reports that, the way they portion that out is there's an investigator in North General Investigations, which is a sticky thing, doesn't exactly work for me under North Investigations, but I, they're literally around, it's on my office. Um, and that person is dedicated to any crime reports going on Villa Park. So one person handles all the Villa Park reports. Are there enough to keep him busy? Yeah, there's enough, uh, but he also has other duties, you know, whether that's jail crimes, I don't, you know, I said he doesn't work for me, so, um, I can't say exactly what else he does, but he does partially other duties and partially Villa Park.
I mean, do we know how many files he handles and how many files Villa Park has in there?
Um, I think that's part of the spreadsheet that, that we've been giving to Jared, has all the crime, uh, all the crime reports, so every crime report generated in the city goes to one investigator, rather than going to the pool, cause there's six investigators in there, and you don't want your report going, you know, to six different people because you want some consistency in it.
So there's six for the entire?
North, North County, yes.
Okay, okay.
But Villa Park's the only one that has a dedicated, all the rest of the, uh, for instance, investigator, But Villa Park's the only one that has a dedicated, all the rest of the, uh, for instance, investigator, you'll have one assigned to Anaheim Midway, and all unincorporated areas of Placentia, and they'll have three or four areas that they're responsible for, uh, there's one investigator for Villa Park, so. I, I think it has a benefit, because you can see tri- uh, crime trends and, and things like that, and one dedicated person to that, and, you know, so that's what the half is.
You, you have any comments on that, Jared, or?
I'm trying to pull up a spreadsheet, but there, I mean, there are enough, unfortunately, crime reports generated, and a lot of them stem from the school, it's full of iPads, laptops, iPhones.
Okay, that's fine, I, I knew, candidly, before I started, even if I can go anywhere, I was just kind of curious to, I wasn't gonna change it.
Then you'll complain when the council meeting goes long.
Curious to see if, uh, there was some basis for that. Okay, well, I'll tell you what, I'll, I'll move the item.
Wait a second, sorry, oh, that's fine, let's, uh, but, I am pretty much done, um, but here's the thing. I think, in my memory, five point six-six percent increase is, is the biggest one I have seen in a very long time, yes?
Absolutely, absolutely.
Yeah.
Yeah, they've been one, maybe two percent.
Yeah, last year was two percent, can't remember what is it before that, so that's a huge increase. And then, I know you've all read this, because you're all lawyer people, but I read it too, just in case I could understand it, and then I'm looking at page five of eight in the contract, and I would like to just point out five dash four A, at the time this agreement is executed, there are unresolved issues pertaining to potential changes in salaries and benefits for county employees. The costs of such potential changes are not included in the fiscal year twenty fourteen, fifteen costs set forth in subsection F two for the fiscal year. So, we all know that our county board of supervisors is currently in negotiations, and there's some question about whether or not some of them are actually working in the best interests of the taxpayers in the city, and we're gonna have to eat it for a really long time, whatever they negotiate. I would like to propose that we, as a council, send a letter to the members of the boards of supervisors, all of them, making them aware of the fact of the increase that we've seen this year, and how much larger it is than we have experienced in years past, pulling out that specific section of the contract to make them aware of how what they're doing right now is going to impact our city's budget for, at, for a long time in the future, and imploring them to bear that in mind when they are in these negotiations, cutting these deals on our behalf. Would you agree that that's something we absolutely need to state to them? Nobody does it, we need to.
I, I would agree, I think that's appropriate.
I do, too.
Make, make our statement as a city that we want them to keep a handle on these costs, yeah.
I agree.
I'll be glad to help draft that letter.
Not that we'll do anything, but we still should do it.
Yeah, I mean, this is right back to the defined benefit plans and your state laws, it's the same thing we're talking about. These are great organizations, but they're out of control with pension costs, period.
Yeah.
They can't be paid.
It's not only just the pension costs, it's also the other, other benefits.
Well, this is.
Pension costs are most of it, though.
It's health care.
The healthcare is very expensive, but the pension's the biggest.
And this is what happens every time, though, they stick this in front of us right before it's time for them to cut their deal, and we get to take it or leave it. And, and, uh, and then we're at their mercy, so, um, I, I'm, I mean, I feel like we don't have a choice, but we're already sitting, last year at thirty percent of our budget was law enforcement, it's gonna be more than that this year, and, and it has gone up, when I first got on this council, it was twenty-five percent of our budget.
Yes.
And now it's thirty, I don't know what it's gonna be next year, I guess we'll find out next month when Michelle does the big show, but, uh.
You just wait till some of these cities start discharging their pension liability, and watch what happens, is it filters down to the cities that are still paying, it's gonna be a nightmare.
Did you move this item?
Uh, I don't.
Well, you were prepared, you were.
I was trying to move it, yeah, I was trying to move it, I.
Preparing to, I'm sorry, I cut you off, because I think this is important.
Okay.
And it's gonna be most interesting when you see the next item, where we've got another contract with a private contractor, and it stays the same.
I know.
It doesn't have to.
Exactly, so, you're making, are you making a motion?
I, I moved it, I moved the item.
All right, second.
Okay, Jared?
With the, uh, letter to the Department of Commerce highlighting the contract, yes, please.
Please.
Mayor Burnett?
Yes.
Council Mills?
Yes.
Council Reese?
Yes.
Council Polley?
Yes.
Mayor Putnam Fasselli?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, on to item eleven, which is our contract with Civil Source, we got a report on that?
Like one?
Nope, don't want one, just thought I'd ask, unless Council, Council member wants it, I don't really want it either.
I had one question, and I hope you had an opportunity to get that to Michelle, with how much we've saved since we've gone to Civil Source over our previous, uh, engineering firm, did you have an opportunity to pull those numbers?
I am actually doing it as we speak, um, basically, in the years up till we used, uh, Civil Source, it's kind of scary to look at the number, um, but in two thousand, um, seven, we started looking at the contract with North Ruffey. Um, we were paying five hundred, five hundred ninety, five seventy each year, five hundred seventy thousand each year for our engineering services. Um, over a five-year period, it was the average of six hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars, now, mind you, we did have some large contracts, which they did some design and construction, um, management for us, but on the whole, we were paying, um, six hundred, I mean, at least an average of five hundred thousand, I think that would be a little safer to say. Um, the last couple of years, we've had, um, Civil Source, and our contract with them for basic engineering is the eighty-seven thousand, but with other, the other projects that we've done, and we've done some significant projects, the average is a hundred and forty. So, there's about a good three hundred thousand dollar savings, if not more, on average.
That's, that's a significant thing, that is very significant.
Amazing.
Let's go with a vote, Jared, I'm shooting for ten o'clock.
He's not working hard enough.
Yeah, let's do it.
Shooting for ten?
Yep.
Second, second.
I believe I already have, uh.
Sorry.
Council Mills?
Yes.
Councilman Reese?
Yes.
Councilman Polley?
Yes.
Mayor Putnam Fasselli?
Yes.
Mayor Burnett?
Yes. Okay, that's gonna be interesting, item twelve, uh, this is the, uh, proposal to retain a consultant for traffic-related studies.
Yes, I, I would like to, uh, speak against this, even though originally I was forward for it, but after looking at, we've done these, these studies twice in the past, if I, if I'm not mistaken, as recently as what, two thousand eleven or twelve, is that correct? There was one done?
The, the last study was in two thousand eleven, the only difference is it was in-house.
That's fine, um, I'd like to also know what, what the, the, the trip, trip cords are all, out there now, there's all, there's some out there now.
Uh, we need to install, uh, traffic counters in order to count the traffic along the streets, also, uh, for a couple of reasons. One is to provide OCTA with the, uh, traffic, uh, volume on our major streets.
Yes.
At the same time, we took the opportunity to put them by the schools, in order to have the traffic counts while the school is, is still open.
Ingress and egress of, of going on, yeah.
Yeah, it's, it's mainly for the main, the street, not the driveways or, uh.
Right.
In and out, so it's mainly the twenty-four hour count on the streets itself.
Okay.
They'll be utilized for the.
So, that's in, that's internal, the counter, good.
We were, we needed the count for OCTA, and we thought this was the right time to get the council.
Sure, absolutely, but, again, I think that we have enough information here, uh, and anecdotal data from the neighborhoods, that I don't think we need to really do this at all, unfortunately.
Okay, um, okay.
That's my recommendation.
I get that, I get that, I, I have, I have some things, because my, this is what concerns me about it, is the scope of work that we've, we're hiring them for. I, I, I don't see any reason for us to be focusing on area three at all, I'd rather see areas one and two. Um, and, and, you know, I, I circle, I, I underline the exact same thing, we're studying existing traffic control devices, including signal timing, uh, parameters, modifications to signage and striding, we've done all that. We've done all that, but I think that what we're looking at doing here is setting the stage for then, if they come back with good recommendations, hiring them to provide the input for going after the safe routes to school grant, that is my understanding of what we're doing here. So, in order for them to truly put together a good plan, they need to actually be the firsthand studiers of this, and, and as far as I'm concerned, considering the amount of trouble that that area causes us, twenty thousand dollars is not a huge expenditure, and they are going to be already working with the schools, the school site representatives, and this, uh, provides that opportunity for us to be cooperative with the other governmental entities we're going to have to work with if we're ever really gonna solve this problem. So, I hear what you're saying, I'd love to get rid of area three altogether, but my understanding is that the hope, their hope is to come back with good recommendations and solutions, and if we like these recommendations and solutions, and we can get buy-in from the school district, et cetera, that they will then be the, who we hire to draw up the plans for submittal of the, of the grant application, correct?
That is correct.
So, for that reason, I, I, I'm actually for this.
I don't think the city should be spending twenty thousand dollars on this particular study, and it, it kind of came to us twofold, it came to us, one, because we were looking at a safe, uh, the safe grant money that we wanted, in addition, that it came to us because of all the issues that are being brought up by the, by the schools. Do I think that anything they come up with, that we pay them twenty thousand dollars for is actually going to solve the problem? I don't think so, we have four schools in a very small area, unless OUSD closes one of those schools, twenty thousand dollars isn't gon- isn't gonna fix it, um, I think at this point, I would not spend the money. Um, we have two different areas here, we have, wanna go after a grant, maybe we need to look at a different type of grant. Second, we have some issues with the school areas, we know there's a problem there, we don't need to have anyone else tell us there's a problem there, we just need some cooperation from OUSD, um, which is what we're, we're working on right now.
Yeah.
So, I'm, I'm against twenty thousand.
It's a slow process, but then, because summer time's coming up, so, that's.
I'd also like to bring something up that I found out today, I did go on, and I briefly mentioned it to Councilwoman Reese, I looked at the amount of enrollment at Saravilla and Serrano in the year two thousand and one, one thousand six hundred and eight. Today, uh, excuse me, two, and, and two thousand and twelve, that number was one thousand six hundred sixty-seven. So, there was only sixty more enrolled pupils between two thousand and one and two thousand and twelve, and I combined both of those schools, just because they share that street of Serrano. Um, I have the numbers, I'm gonna make them available to the council, I polled all the numbers for all of the schools for the last, from nineteen eighty-eight to twenty twelve, so you can compare them, so you can see there is a huge difference in some of the schools, but overall, the numbers are the same. So, I don't know why the traffic is as bad as it is.
Well, I think it's because of the source of the students coming in. That's the.
And that, and that demographic information, does it tell you, does it tell you where they're coming from?
Uh, this particular demographic information has it by white, African-American, Asian, Hispanic, American Indian.
Yeah, I don't care about what color they are, I care about where they're coming from.
I understand that, but that's what the study says.
You know, if they live in the city of Villa Park, more than likely, they're walking down the street, um, if they're coming in from Orange.
Well, we know that.
But we know that.
That's what's, and that's where, that's where the whole changes, when I first got on the council, fifteen percent of the students resided in Villa Park, and now we're down to eight. When I heard that number, I was shocked, that only eight percent of the students actually live here, it just keeps going down. And we still have kids, that the parents are sending their kids to private schools.
Go ahead, Brad.
So, I, I have real mixed emotions on this, um, there, you know, there, it talks about they're gonna study this and see if there's a problem, well, we already know there's a problem, there's no questions asked on that, so that part's a waste of money, the question is, I think really why we're doing this is we've all racked our heads and haven't come up with an answer yet. We, we have these little things which are helpful, but we don't have an ultimate answer, I'm not so sure there is an ultimate answer, I don't know. Uh, as someone mentioned, there are schools crammed in a small area, and the parents drive their kids, they're all coming from, the majority's coming from out of town, which creates traffic jams. Um, so, you know, do we need to pay money to see if there's a problem? No, we, we know that, that's done. Question is, can they offer a suggestion to fix the problem? Uh, certainly it affects me, I live there, I, it is, I attest, it's real, you know, we all know that, um, so I have mixed emotions on it. To me, this is like throwing money on a crap table, you know, I mean, well, if we don't do it, we'll never know if they can come up with a, a way to fix it, if we do do it, it's kind of cheap, and maybe they can fix it. There are a lot of residents upset about it, um, do I feel in my heart of hearts they're gonna come up with a fix? Uh, do I feel in my heart of hearts OUSD will work with them more than us? Probably not, sadly, you know, but, does that mean we shouldn't go down the path and try? I'm, 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 I'm mixed.
Well, let me just say this, because I hear what you're saying, and I absolutely agree with you, uh, um, you know, and I remember when Akram, when we were sold Civil Source, it was because Akram was a traffic management specialist, and he's done a lot, that's what I said, a lot of this has already been done, and he's made some of those adjustments, but this is their full specialty, um, and, and, see, there's, there's also a matter of timing, the political timing is right, because, uh, to get OUSD to work with us, because OUSD is gonna want and need Villa Park's support to pass their school facilities bond measure, so if there was ever going to be a time for them to be willing to come to the table and work with us, this would be it, right up until November fourth. And so, well, I mean, that, that's, timing-wise, it couldn't be better, and there might not be a better time to, to try to do it.
Well, bringing up the timing issue, when will this study be complete and, and in our hands?
Well, the reason.
It's gotta be three or four months out.
I brought it for you, before you today, is because they can get out there tomorrow, if we approve it tonight, they can get out there, we'll give them the approval tomorrow, they'll get out there the next day to review it, because school's ending, I think the last day of school is the twelfth through the thirteenth.
Two weeks, uh, Thursday.
Um, this will at least give them a, you know, a couple of days to witness it, so they can work on this throughout the summer, and come back in a couple of weeks, maybe a month with some recommendations.
Let me add a couple of things to the discussion, which is, uh, I heard from the council members, you gotta remember, I mean, I've worked with the three consultants who are really specialized in, uh, traffic, uh, studies, and, uh, and also, uh, in school traffic, uh, and they've seen, you know, the congestion, they've seen, you know, all the activities that occurs, uh, by school, and it's not new, uh, and, uh, I've asked them to come in with a very fast proposal, so we can bring it to the city council, uh, for your approval, and so, that's why you see it's only three pages, uh, or four pages is, i- each proposal is, uh, s- so, didn't want the package to put every, every staffs that, because most of the staff that, in all these three companies, are dealt with, uh, in previous, uh, studies or previous analysis at other cities. Uh, so, that's why it was very simple letterhead proposal, now, what are the, do we expect from them? Yes, they're gonna come in and, uh, observe it from a, a bias, non-bias, you know, uh, or outsider, uh, personnel, and from a technical standpoint. Now, is the solutions or recommendations that they're gonna come up, it's gonna solve and eliminate all the problems? No, schools, as everybody mentioned, schools are there in the small areas, there is no solution of a complete solution for the traffic congestion unless we eliminate those schools.
Yeah.
You know, which, that's not gonna happen, okay, but the question is that, hopefully, that we'll be able to come up with some other recommendations besides what we did in twenty eleven, you know? And twenty eleven, we've did the, uh, short term, the, also the long term, which is the long term requires, uh, a lot of funding, and it's kind of like, uh, in part, or, requires a lot of coordination from the, uh, district and from also other agencies and so on, and it kind of put, uh, away. Hopefully, they'll be able to come up with something better than what was done in twenty eleven, uh, and, and that will help us to submit for a grant and get the funding for major project within that area, so be able to solve, at least, to some degree, the, the problem.
You're talking about what kind of a major project, redoing the street?
That's one of the things, could be widening the street, take, uh, uh, property, I'm, you know.
But we can't encroach on their property, right?
You know, uh.
If they allow us to.
Then, with the Orange, the school district, or, it might be, as if the timing is right, coordinate with them, allows to widen the street, put the sidewalks on their property, and be able to widen it, maybe their, then parking would be allowed on the street, I'm just, uh, I don't wanna.
Yeah, I understand, but.
That's could be, uh, a possibility.
Actually, I, I, I think that, that's a very good point, and that's something I think we can address with the school district ourselves. I don't see why we need to have a hiring outside for, one, but secondly, I think the folks that are there are well used to the school traffic, it is the weekend issues that seem to really burn everyone over there, would you agree with that, Brad?
Yeah, you know, it, it, it go, uh, I want, kind of want to say it goes with the tides, it's, it's mixed emotions on that, lately, it's been the weekend deal, it seems like.
Yeah.
There are a few of the people that really go after the school deal, emergency vehicles can't get through, blah, blah, blah.
That's what.
So, you, you've got both sides, but lately, it's been louder on the, the weekend side.
But that could flop in a minute.
It flops, it goes like this.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
See, but, but my other question is, is, is this particular company that, and you're recommending them because you, you've worked with them, is what you're telling me.
Yeah, sure.
And then they have the skills. And then they have the skill set, once they have studied this and come up with proposals, to actually draw up the plans to assist with the grant application for the safe routes to school. Do they have that capacity?
Yes.
But that, that would be an additional, that would be an additional contract.
No, I've, I've talked to them that they will be, you know, uh, preparing their grant application on our behalf.
See.
As part of it.
Yeah, you see.
That's not what this says.
Yeah, it doesn't say that.
But it is after, you know, when they did the proposal, I made it sure it says, hey, look at it as part of your scope of work. You will be whatever.
Yeah, but we don't see it here.
Certainly not here. We couldn't prove that this won't get us there. Cole, I, I, I have a couple, I, you know, I, I agree with pretty much everything I've heard here tonight. Unfortunately, it doesn't solve the problem. I have some questions here, and I think I'm just going to read through my notes of questions, Jared, in the hopes that maybe it triggers some comments from you, I guess, or whoever. One of the items was, does this scope of work, this bid, does this include other repetitive activities utilizing school activities? Like legal, like Little League, et cetera, on the weekends? And I read through this. I wasn't at all convinced that was within the scope of activities, and that's one of the big problems. Another one, I note, have we done this before? Will this conclude, will this include consideration of you, of, of novel-ish ideas such as utilization of school parking lots? Or will this just be traffic flow, lights and signs and curbs like it's specifically referred to in the project? I mean, if, if this is just going to be, you know, as it specifically says in here, lights, curbs, traffic, blah, blah, blah. It's really nothing, I don't think, that hasn't been addressed before and that we haven't been beaten to death on and looked at a hundred times. We've already had a study. They changed the light timing. So if that's what's going on here, my gut tells me this isn't going too far. Um, and I would really want to know, does this include novel ideas, you know? Does this include the other activities or just the normal school stuff you're monitoring? How far are you going to go? Are you going to work up the proposals? It's not in here either, although Akram references it. And as a whole separate matter, you know, what's the potential, and maybe, maybe another creative issue? What's the potential to have teachers walk kids to the other side of Serrano? And maybe something's resolved over there, or we got a little space in the lot? And, and there's a turnout that, that can be accomplished over on Meats. I mean, these are the kind of creative things that I think need to be explored. I think we've beaten, my guess is, from what I've heard, we've beaten this traffic, this conventional traffic flow issue to death. That sounds just to me like stacking another study on top of the old ones. So those, those are my questions and comments and.
As for the extracurricular school activities.
We can, we can have them include that as part of this scope of work. That is, I mean, they would, uh, provide some, uh, recommendations. How to be mitigate the parking, uh, you know, uh, problems due to the activities as the Little Leagues or AYS.
But none of that is in the agreement and, and.
Unfortunately, that was the short timeframe that we were working with to get it to this meeting.
Right, and, and in addition, is, is.
I'm not sure that that is included as part of that scope of work.
Okay, and how about the novel concepts of.
The grants, too.
Yes.
Yeah, the grant write-up. And what about the novel ideas that of.
Right now is we're changing the scope of work in here where we may need to go up to rebid the project.
If I could comment, uh, Mayor, those ideas that you're talking about, which I do call them novel. We spoke about them at the last two meetings with the CDC and with the district. We have, and we've started that discussion already, novel ideas. Well, what if, not, not, not something we want. What if you remove that house at the end of the cul-de-sac and open it up to go out to Meats? So you have another out. Is that something we want? Of course not, but it's an option. What if we ask them to sell part of the, uh, field? You know, so we've started that discussion with them.
One-way traffic two times a day.
Exactly, and we brought up, but we have started that discussion with the district. I mean, we're not, we're not meeting every week, but we've had two meetings where we've thrown it out. Um, and it does, it is a work in process, so I, I'm glad that you said that because we are throwing wild ideas out there. And they're listening. They're listening at least to.
Yeah, they're listening because the time is right to get them to come to the table. And this will be a fleeting time, uh, timeframe.
They are not going to change my mind on the bond, so they can.
Well, I understand that, but they're, they're, they're not changing my mind either. Um, here's, here, here, this, this sentence though specifically says, this effort does not include preparation of any concept drawings or design plans. But as needed, those could be provided separately following discussion of our concept ideas. So they're going to come to us with concept ideas. And if we buy into those, then they would do the actual formal drawings for the grant application.
Let, let's assume one of the things which is, uh, making that connection from behind the school all the way to Meats.
Meats.
They'll put it as a exhibits and concept plan. However, they won't do any design.
The real technicals, yeah, which would be necessary for applying for the grant.
Which we've looked at before and it was dangerous. It's too fast.
The grant should give them a concept and, you know, not a detailed design as part of the project will be, and, and the funding.
Well.
Here's our leverage. Our leverage is if we come up with a decent idea, maybe we find that we really could punch that through. We could, we could, we could buffer all those cards into that and feed some of that on Meats. If we have that kind of idea, it looks like, or, or, I think our real leverage is to turn around the schools and say, look, if you don't work with us, we're going to mark all the streets red. Okay? And then you can put all those cars, okay, right in your parking lot. Because we're going to ban all the parking in there because our citizens are driving us crazy.
And then seven percent of the people who live in Villa Park are going to be over here yelling too because they have to.
I mean, that's the way if you really wanted to create pressure and say, look, you've got to feel the pain too, all right?
I'm, okay.
Well, we've looked at the Meats thing before. It's dangerous. It's a blind spot. The cars go too fast. That's been looked at.
Well, this, this thing, here's the problem.
Unless we adjust the light, maybe in conjunction with it.
Meats would need a new light entirely.
Oh, yeah.
The question is, what are these guys going to do for us? I mean, this issue has been under the microscope for years.
And I believe that's where Councilman Reese said it best is, it's a crap shoot.
It is a crap shoot. And the other thing is, we need to fish or cut bait tonight because you've got two weeks of school left. So you either hire these people ASAP, but you get the benefit of those two weeks because we've got a lot of citizens upset. And that two weeks is valuable study time. It's either we do it now or we wait. It's right. It's one or the other.
Because we had to make the twenty thousand dollar decision because we have a two-week window right now.
I, I have to agree with that. I mean, if I thought this would really do something, I'd spend twice this without even blinking. I'd spend three times this without even blinking. The problem is, I just really don't believe it's going to, it's going to do anything. There's only a limited number of options. These guys can't do miracles.
And, and I have problems too because the scope of work, you know, I would, I wouldn't want them to focus on Area Three at all. So it sounds to me like we all agree that this is a half, this is unfortunately a half-baked proposal. And, and we don't really have any.
It's only Area One we're concerned with really.
Yeah, well, Area One and Two.
This is a way to feel like we're doing something for the people that are unhappy. So that the city council is doing something to improve their position, but I don't think it's going to work.
All right.
Can I move this?
Okay, just a second.
Time frame.
I want to move this.
I, I, I think we should move this too. I think we should ask that you go, go back out. And focus in just on Area One. Just on Area One. And get something that clearly states that we will get some concept design and assistance with grant application, the grant application. So we're just going to have to punt. We can't.
And, and weekend effort.
Uh, the, yes, the, yes, those, those things that we've brought up is being lacking. So you wanted to make a motion that we.
I make a motion.
You know what, before you do that, how, how, this is, this is, you want to talk novel, this is real novel. How about if we asked them if they'd be interested in doing a performance-based fee? Where we would pay them based upon a proposal that was workable and had certain, certain measurable results in terms of the traffic flow. Let's see how, let's see how much risk they want to take.
They won't do it. They can't do it.
I'm sure they won't.
It's a no bid.
Yeah, I'm sure that's what will happen, and that will show you how much confidence there is that, that there's going to be a workout to this.
Greg would like to make a motion.
I'm going to move this item.
As, how are you going to move it?
I'm going to move to reject it.
And I will, I will second, I will second that.
Put the vote out, Jared. Let's get going.
To, uh, to reject the bid and then we'll take the summer to rework its scope.
Right, to very, to, to reject, huh?
We have to.
But we need to come back, focus, drill down in just on Area One. And come back with the things that we really want to see happen.
Councilman Mills.
To reject, yes.
To reject. Councilman Polly?
Yes.
Councilman Reese?
Yes.
Mayor Lieutenant Passamela?
Yes.
Mayor Burnett?
Yes.
Item thirteen. Orange County Animal Care Services.
It's going to be another fun one.
Yeah, you know, I, I'd like to take just a, a brief lead on this because Jared and I spent some time talking about it.
What'd you guys come up with?
I, I have a suggestion, all right? We're at eighty-three hundred dollars a year right now. Um, frankly, if, if I had my choice, do the same thing I do with most government services and put it out to bid and privatize it. Uh, you know, but unfortunately, I don't know if there's anybody, any private entities out there now that are doing it. We even went so far as to talk about, you know, suggesting to some vets to get their organization together, go out and put a, put a private venture together. And we'll contract with them. And frankly, I'm not sure that would be the best way to go. But in the interim, with our small size, we obviously got to have the service. For our small size, I don't know how we think we're going to do anything for less than eighty-three hundred dollars a year. So frankly, I suggest we just stay where we are and see if we can get somebody, maybe initiate some discussion in the private sector. Let them know there's a need here for a service for government agencies. And if somebody could put a package together, maybe a veterinary group or something, or their local organization, they could come back. And I'm sure there's an organization of Orange County cities that would jump on the bandwagon. In the meantime, for eighty-three hundred dollars gross cost, I don't know how you think we're going to be able to do anything about it.
I think they could raise this too.
Yeah, but we can change, we can all.
We have nowhere to go.
Yeah, we, there's no place to go. It's a, what is it, a one-year?
We have nowhere to go.
It's a contractor.
Now, we've only had eighty-five charged edible days.
Yes.
Eighty-five. That means there was what?
One dog that stayed in the shelter for eighty-five days. Or two dogs for forty a year.
And of course, this eighty-three hundred does not include all the citizens that pay their twenty bucks a year.
It is, it offsets it.
Oh, oh, that's part of this?
So our total, I'm confused. Conversations right now.
So if we, if I could.
I have the floor.
Greg has the floor.
No, I'm serious. Now, I, we, one dog. I mean, and is this somebody whose dog we know is from here, or is it just a stray picked up here? We don't know that. That's, that's my only question.
It's tougher. Total animal care costs, let me see, are thirty thousand a year?
Oh, the.
The total costs are for, for attributed to Villa Park, this is called thirty thousand dollars a year. The fees, the fees that OC Animal Care receives, uh, the twenty-dollar dog license.
From the residents.
From the residents. Twenty-dollar dog license, the impound fees, the adoption fees, offset part of that thirty grand. So our gross costs are eight grand this year.
So what do we get for the eight grand? They come pick up a dead dog on the street?
They pick up dead dogs, animal, animal shelter services, barking dog complaints, uh, vet services at the county.
Dogs.
Vicious dogs.
Yeah.
It could be, it could be.
I don't.
I'll do, I'll do it for eighty-three hundred bucks.
I, I, I know.
I'll load up in my Jeep.
I'm telling you. I get absolutely nothing except for an annual bill. That's all I get.
I mean, and that's the option. We can, I can take these numbers to local shelters, uh, both private and public. And see, see, you know, if, if they're interested in providing a proposal.
Would they, would they, do they have the capacity? Did any of them have the capacity actually to come up and pick up a dog? Well, here's what I don't want. The, the concept of forming another joint powers authority, another OCTA or OCFA animal that just, you know, morphs and grows and becomes a problem. Is, if they mention that to you, run. Turn around the other direction and run. And, and, and we're not doing that.
Unless it does nothing more than put out a request for proposal for the private sector.
You know as well as I do, that as soon as a JPA is formed, it just becomes its own animal. And then we, that we can't control. So we don't want that. I, I would be very interested though in finding out if there are any other local sher- shelters. And fi- and even maybe other, other cities that have, you know, do they all contract with the county?
Seventeen contracts with the county. A lot of South County cities banded together. And I believe the most recent, and just a quick research that I've done on the internet. Uh, Alicia Viejo terminated their contract with the county and actually went to the Mission Viejo Shelter and ended up paying more for better service.
Oh, really?
The thought behind that, for better service, and, and part of that was a vehicle. Because now they're providing their own field services. They had to provide a vehicle to transport the animals. Unfortunately, it's sixty thousand dollars for the air-conditioned vehicle with four or five kennels and stages.
It's too small.
It's the humane way to transport where we are required, and Jennifer is fascinating to talk to when it comes to this. Um, she is the animal care guru. Um, we are required, I thought, well, let's just get rid of animal care services and let the strays run, run across San Diego and into Orange.
No. Problem, problem solved.
Um, chase them out of here with fireworks.
On our city very soon.
And, and cities are required at minimum to provide basic services. How you provide that basic service, is it basic or is it the Cadillac standard? Uh, you know, is, is, is up to the cost.
And we don't even know what the state requires of us. What about the city of Orange? Do they contract with the?
They contract.
Yeah.
In Orange.
Or a private entity?
With the county. And Orange, actually.
I couldn't read it because it was like, you know, beyond ag. It's so small.
Well, Orange actually had the biggest battle with animal care because the shelter is in Orange. So if an animal was dropped off and it was in, attributed to Villa Park or Yorblinda or Buena Park, it just automatically went to Orange. Because the shelter was in Orange.
Yeah.
So they had, they had the largest problem with this.
Because I mean, out of everybody else, we're the only city in two figures. The next closest one is five hundred forty.
Mm-hmm.
Animal days. Five X. It's a huge, no, six X.
So what's the timeframe of this? We have to do this relatively quick to keep the service?
No, the, the animal care contract renews annually until we give our notice.
I mean, we don't have a solution today, so I think we're kind of screwed on this. But maybe we should do this and then start researching our own for next time. I mean, I don't know.
That emotion?
We can look at that.
Can't we leave this contract anytime we want?
Absolutely.
No, I know, but what are you going to do tomorrow for leaving?
But, but the thing, well, we're not going to leave it tonight.
Uh.
We're giving staff direction about what we would like to have them do. And if he comes up with a better deal, we can leave that contract in, yeah, it with, uh, with, no.
I thought it was six months.
No, no. Yeah, I think that's what it is.
Either way, we can terminate with, with or without cause.
Exactly, so.
But why can't we come back to them and say, this is ridiculous for us?
Yeah.
We can, but we won't go.
We can.
Well, we can.
They're going to say, take it or leave it.
We have, and it doesn't.
We don't have a better choice.
They don't care.
At the moment, we don't have time to find.
The next logical large shelter would be Irvine.
Yeah, and that's far.
And unfortunately, now, it, it, it may be cheaper services down there. But now we're going to pay the surcharge on the fuel to transport to and from Irvine, to transport to and from Mission Viejo. I mean, one of the best things to do is maybe there's a quasi-type, you know, collaboration. We can, uh, contract with OC Animal Care for field services and the Villa Park Animal Clinic for veterinary, you know, or for shelter services.
Splitting it up, would there a contract on the mouth for that to happen?
You just have to slice this pie and, and break up the contract in so many ways. But how much staff time do we want to spend doing that to save four grand a year, maybe, or eighty-three hundred at most?
Yeah, but here's my other question. We would still be, uh, uh, look, pet owner Deborah Polly, okay, I've got a dog. I'm still going to have to pay my tax to have my dog to the county, correct?
I don't know.
I don't think so.
No, not, not, we'd have to remove the, the.
Wow, so then we wouldn't even have to pay the tax to have a dog.
You'd have to pay it to another shelter.
Yeah.
You'd have to pay it to an Irvine or Mission Viejo.
Depending on the deal you cut to the private company.
Right.
Or unless the city wants to subsidize the thirty thousand dollars and, and now the residents.
Or a private company may not charge private citizens. We don't know. I'm going to let their.
They all charge.
Yeah.
What are they charged?
The, uh, the, most of them are around the twenty-dollar mark. I believe the county, I, I listened to, I think it was a voice of OC, uh, hour and seventeen segment. Um, the county impound fee may have been a hundred dollars where others were fifty dollars. Um, but they, they'll just make it up in another end. You know, they'll charge the city more, this or that. Fees might not be as high, but then the city will subsidize more.
Well, we can't afford to subsidize. I mean, we are, we are subsidizing. That's what we're doing.
We're net donor city regardless of what we do.
Regardless, yeah. And, and, I mean, while I'm all for trying to find the cheapest contract privatization out there, I just, it's eighty-three hundred. And, and I mean, if the cost goes up to twenty-five grand, absolutely, let's have a look at it. But I think it's a lot of staff time to save a couple thousand. But I think it's a lot of staff time to save a couple thousand dollars.
It was a shock to the system, and so I guess it comes down to, look, I think it'd be great to see how the budget numbers play out before we get too far off, far down the road on this.
Absolutely. I wanna see if the county does, you know, raise their fees, as Supervisor's talking about tonight, maybe that cost goes down, you know? And, and we somehow come up with a twenty thousand dollar miraculous credit.
Is that them gonna build a new shelter?
And that's the other thing I wanna research, is it said that the cities mutually agreed to it. I don't know where.
You didn't agree to it?
Hasn't been since I was here. I found reference to something in two thousand nine, but there's no paperwork on the city end. Then you research it and I found Orange County Register articles back to nineteen ninety-four. So when did we mutually agree? Who knows?
To spend twenty-five million dollars on a, give me a break. Give that twenty-five dollar, twenty-five million dollars to the school for the kids. Have you got the NOI? Okay, I haven't heard anything on that either.
So if we agree to this, Jared, we can bail down the road?
Anytime.
We're not stuck? And they, do they prorate you back or something? Or you just, you, you use up to your end and then bail?
I, I mean, you know, I'm sure that would all be calculated to the day that you turn it in.
So it's not like a five-year agreement, we're stuck, we could bail? Okay, well then we have to do it.
We only pay by quarter usage.
This is just informative. It automatically, so-
All we're doing right now is discussing how we as a council think we should deal with what's, what's being handed to us potentially. I think it was great that Supervisor Spitzer got to be here and we got to talk with him about our concerns with this. It'll be interesting to see, watch him to see if he actually, you know, acts on those concerns that were addressed, so.
So, just to get, the, the shelter, when we had the dog bite incident about two months ago, there was a vicious dog, okay. Right, now, when they took that dog, and I, I don't know what happened to the dog, who's pays for that? The services, when they came out here to collect the dog?
I, I believe that when the services come out, we, it's charged to Villa Park.
Okay.
But then I believe that that resident is billed for it. Whether they pay for it, how they collect it, I know that in, I believe it was two years ago, they started collecting the fees through the, um, the, um, count, yeah, the tax collector, thank you, I'm like, huh. Yeah, so they counted through the tax collector and it's, and it's an absorbent increase in their fees because they couldn't handle receiving the money correctly is how I was, is explained to me. But anyways, I don't know how the penalty is if, you know, let's say the person's like, well, you killed my dog, I'm not gonna pay for it, you know? Whatever the situation is.
We pay for the service for them to come out because they needed to collect the animal.
Correct, correct. But I believe that they, I mean, there's gotta be some, you know, I've, I've never had a dog called, called out on that, so I don't know. I mean, I don't, I would assume that the, the owner would.
It's just more of an answer, you know, an answer, yeah.
Yeah, a hundred percent, it should be a hundred percent cost recovery. You know, if, if somebody allows their dog to run wild in the streets and then it has to be caught and then they have to go, are they paying the full cost of what it was to house that dog for three days, four days, or whatever?
I gotta imagine they do, and I'm thinking back to the cat house several years ago. I mean, our bill hasn't been more than four or five thousand, and that one incident was about eighteen thousand dollars, the response in and of itself. And we didn't pay for that. So there's gotta be a mechanism in place to where the property owner or the legal owner of said animal, animals, will be responsible for that cost.
I wouldn't assume anything. I think you should ask the question anyway.
No, absolutely, I still will to, to confirm and verify an answer.
This is ridiculous.
So I, I'm gonna, I'm gonna move that we go ahead and approve that when your contract-
We're not, we're not approving anything, it was all discussion.
Just to maintain the current services.
And so really, our, our, don't waste a bunch of staff time on it, keep your eyes open. We've got some questions we still would like Animal Control to answer. That's really all it boils down to, right? We, we actually are at the end here and we are gonna get into mayor and council member matters.
Jared, if, if you've got a city managers' organization that you deal with frequently, you know, this might be a good topic to bring up and see how many of these cities would be interested if some private sector group put a package together that they could contract with.
And that, and that's where, as the Supervisor alluded to earlier tonight, is when the city managers agreed to pick up the extra seven hundred thousand dollars. Those meetings, unfortunately, I just, I do not attend regularly and, and I need to start doing that. They're Wednesdays and I just gotta find the time to get out of the office and go have lunch for a couple hours.
There's, yeah, if there's enough cities interested, then maybe you got someplace to go.
Cities have, we can beat this up and down. Cities have expressed doing a number of things, but nobody's actually taken the lead just yet.
Right, that's what I'm saying, so it might, might be-
Not in a position to do that.
And we're not in a position to carry all that either with this item it is for us. Okay, well, we're on individual council member items. I hope nobody has a lot to report. I'm not gonna do anything, anybody, I don't think I have anything I have to report on. Yeah, I do, I guess I gotta do the fire authority. Anyone have anything they have to report?
Well, I, I have a few things that I'd like to mention. I can't even remember last time we had a council meeting, but we had our trash recycling seminar that was not widely advertised, so I was a little disappointed, but I'm very, very pleased for about the ten people who did come. They put on a very nice program for us, invited the community if they ever wanted to go and see their eco center, which is a very nice tour. And we have our first field trip for our public elementary school going to see the eco center in two weeks. So that's something that's been, they were very kind to come and talk to the kids and they're gonna take them out. In addition, had a school committee meeting, which, I'm gonna combine the CDC and the school committee meeting and I'll let Greg talk a little bit more about some of it, where we did have the residents come talking about the parking. They've been involved in listening to different type of people from the district, talking to the PFSO's presidents from the school, discuss the parking issues. And we've done our best to educate the residents who have come to those meetings as to how the school functions, how many people are at the school, how the after-school activities function. One thing I just wanna clarify is that promises were not made not to have any soccer games. OUSD clarified that they don't have any soccer teams on a regular basis, but there are about four tournaments a year that will still be going on.
Were promises made to have that back gate open?
The back gate, it has been open and this was the first weekend that I saw that it wasn't. And I know that because the residents tell me how much they like the back gate being open. And when I say residents, I don't mean the ones off who live there, the residents who are actually utilizing it.
Right.
Who are parking in the back. So the fact that that gate was open, not open, someone could have shut it long weekend, I mean, that can happen, but the gate has been open. So, you know, there's no explanation as to why.
But you'll, are you going to try to address that with them?
That it was, that the gate was closed, yes, of course. Yeah.
Yeah, we'll, we'll do that.
Yes, yes, of course. But they have done a fine job and of course, it's not speedy by any means. There was a large soccer tournament and I wanna just make sure that, I'm sure that some people will listen to it. There was a lot of activity over at the school. There are graduation dances, there are award ceremonies, there are band presentation orchestras, there's a lot that's going on right now. And unfortunately, you're gonna have, at the end of the year, you're gonna have a lot of traffic around every single one of the schools right now. I'd like to say it's gonna get better, but in two weeks it'll be completely empty. So we'll have a, a few, we're gonna have a few months of, if you live around a school, it's gonna be good. But I just wanna explain what's, you know, been going on at the school. The Cervella's been very, very busy at this time as well as the high school.
Well, and also the, the district has been pretty receptive, I mean, they're, they're listening.
They're, yeah, they're, they're listening.
The biggest issue is trying to get a key for anything at the district. Remember how long it took us to get an SRO key? Took over a year.
I have one, let's see, one more item. We did have a CPR class that was canceled due to only, I think we had six people or maybe sign up and we need, four, and we needed eight. And it's going to be rescheduled. And to try and get some people here, Serona Water has offered anyone who signs up for that CPR course, they'll give them two free fishing tickets, fishing passes, as well as a small fishing boat for the lake. So if they sign up for CPR, that's what they're gonna get.
That's very good.
So, and that's all I have.
Okay. I have a report from Vector Control, which is always interesting. We have a new vector in the county called Crazy Ants. And they fight with the Fire Ants, by the way. So I thought you should all know that. And, and they, they have traps out for them because they're, they, they, they go after a bunch of other types of bugs as well. Other than that, there's been no West Nile viruses reported so far this year. And as far as in our area, there's been some down in, in Datapoint, Irvine and Buena Park, but nothing near here. As far as anything else there, it's pretty much business as usual. They are gonna be remapping the county. They take an airplane and they look at all the, they take an entire map, it's an infrared map so they can see how green the pools and pools of water are in the county, and they can tell how green it is if it's got mosquitoes growing in and out of it. So that's the basic thing for that. As far as the foundation, we've already heard from the CDC, I think we had, we've had enough of that, but the picnic was on Sunday, I think it was pretty much a success, and there's about five hundred people there, I think, all together. I think the System of Rock was the rock, the band, and they did a very good job of intermittently stopping and having the children's and kids' games. It worked out very well. We had a lot of local vendors there as well. And again, thanks to the sheriff and, and the fire authority for bringing out different, different things for us to see. Of course, I have to thank my two fellow male counterparts for being in the dunk tank with me. And-
We're looking for some more co-ed activity there.
I don't think that's gonna go-
I'm not going to go for the wet t-shirt contest option, but I appreciate your offer.
Okay. You're very welcome. Other than that, we had, it was a very good time, I thought. They had some nice prizes. As far as the, the, on the May tenth, there was a dog walk down here on, on the, on the green and it was, it was very successful. About thirty people showed up with their dogs. As far as, we had also a thank you party at Carol Stone's, which was week before last on a Sunday. And there's a movie night coming up on the thirteenth, that's for our elementary, and another one on August twenty-first.
Frozen.
Frozen.
It's a movie. It should do very well.
And then all the girls will be singing the entire thing. And also, we have a Halloween festival on October thirtieth as usual and other things. The Saturday is December sixth this year.
What is?
The Santa tour is December sixth, and December fourteenth is the boat parade.
It's on two different days this year?
Two different weekends, which I don't like, but that's what they've got planned so far. Is there any reason for that, Jared, or?
That's, they ask-
We might wanna logic a plate about that, so, oh, I will. So, and I'll find out also who the other treasurer nominees were as well. I didn't know that. That's it.
Real quick, I'm just gonna let you know what I've been up to. On April twenty-sixth, I went to an event for Claude Parrish, who's running for county assessor. And one of the main reasons I went was it was being hosted by Gary and Judy Krantz, who live on the corner of Center and Jacatall. And it was at a warehouse that they own in Santa Ana that houses all of his antique cars. If you're a car person, wow, it was just pretty spectacular. I just thought I'd tell you about that because when I saw him show up, I knew right away that he was concerned about us maybe causing issues with people who wanna have their collectible cars all over the place. And he loves vehicles. There were sixteen antiques that were really off the charts and in cherry condition. On Sunday, April twenty-seventh, I think many of us attended the Women's League Tour or worked that tour. And I just really think we need to tip our hat to MJ Lucero and Kelly Jordan, who were the co-hosts of that event, if you will, and the entire Villa Park Women's League Tour team, because it was an outstanding event from beginning to end. And all of those proceeds go right back into the community, particularly heading into the school. So it's really a great event, it was really well-attended. The party here with the post, you know, catering it, it just was a great event all the way around. On May second, I went to the PJI Advisory Board meeting with, to receive some briefings on ongoing legal battles with regard to preserving our religious liberties. And then several of us attended the prayer breakfast. I've gone to the prayer breakfast, the Orange County Government Leaders Prayer Breakfast, every single year since I've been on the council. And it is a very, it's always just absolutely moving. The guy that they had the speaker this year was Jeff Nicholas, who was a Blackhawk pilot, lifetime, and a lifetime pilot. And he told his story of, of time in war and, and how he found the Lord. And they never, never whitewash the, the gospel story at these, these events, it's pretty rare. And government leaders from all over the county were there and I just, I really appreciate that so very much, that event. Carolyn Kavetschi, I think, is the honorary chairman and does this every year. On May ninth, in the city of Villa Park, we hosted State Senator Mimi Walters for a roundtable discussion. We had about fifteen members of the community that were specifically invited based on their areas of, of interest. We had the water board there so they could talk water issues, we had some bankers, realtors, folks from the cemetery district. Greg Mills attended, Jared had an opportunity to meet the senator, share, share some information. We had CPAs and auditors, just a real cross-section of folks and had a very, really very robust one-hour conversation where we shared our concerns and issues with her. And I was very appreciative that she took the time out of her time, day to come to see us. On Wednesday, May fourteenth, I had my smoke alarms installed. And the only reason I participated in the free smoke detector program that the city of Villa Park has been participating in was to see how it worked. Apparently, OCFA got all these smoke alarms and then they, we never heard anything about it for the longest time because they had to find somebody who was going to take that program and carry it forward. And Ed Carter's company have actually stepped up and he is providing his staff, when they've got downtime, to come out and install these smoke detectors. I thought I had an adequate number of smoke detectors in my home, I had one upstairs, one downstairs. I found out I didn't. You're supposed to have one over every, you know, door in each bedroom. And so I asked a lot of questions, I'm sure the kid thought I was crazy. And I, and I, I thanked him, he gave me his card and I gave him mine and he said, shouldn't you know what this is about? I said, I do, I just wanted to see how it really truly worked. But I think we owe Ed Carter some thanks for doing that, you know, providing his staff to complete a project that would not have been completed otherwise. I was honored on May seventeenth to represent the city of Villa Park at the Day of the Dog and the Veteran on Armed Forces Day out at the Mara Branman Horse Arena and presented a proclamation to, to the organizers of that event. But I actually presented it to a young Marine named Milan, who was in a specially-designed all-terrain wheelchair that he had received because of the Semper Five Fund. That event supported the Semper Five Fund. And he had lost both of his legs in combat and several of his fingers on his right hand. But what, just a great spirit he had, there was like no defeat in him, he was just so upbeat and just thankful for, you know, to be there, to interface with everyone. And I was just very thankful that all of you came down and signed that, signed that proclamation quickly. I read the whole thing because we ended up being, the city of Villa Park actually represented the spirit of what that entire event was about. And so it was very well-written, staff did a great job of putting that together, I guess an intern did it. She did a beautiful job with it, our intern did a great job. I went to the same event with the Villa Park Community Services Foundation and it was a great open house and time of just kind of fellowship and just spending time together, and I really enjoyed that. Carol Stone was wonderful to have opened her house up. And of course, the Villa Park picnic was a lot of fun. And I, I liked the rock band too, I thought they were terrific. I know we're going to be adjourning this meeting in the memory of former mayor Bill McEloney. I was able to spend that entire Sunday afternoon with him. Gwen had called me the night before telling me that the hospice was coming up and that I needed to come up there. And had some pretty significant discussions with him about things of eternal matters. And I was able to pray with him and it's just a huge loss to our community. He has done so much for us, just donated to absolutely everything, so generous with his time, his talents, and his treasure. And so I just, I know everyone was going to try to attend the Celebration of Life services that are this Sunday, June first, at twelve-thirty, out at Fairhaven Memorial Gardens. And you can get more information off the city website if you need it. Thank you.
Anybody else? No?
Rick, I have one more thing. I think we also owe Ed Carter a big thank you for, and Brad for organizing- and Brad, for organizing the picnic. I didn't, I forgot to mention that. I think everyone knew that, but I think we should bring that up specifically. So thank you, Ed, very much, Brad.
It was a good picnic.
Well, I guess that leaves me. I guess I'm obligated to report on the fire authority. I think I, I think I've made two of those meetings since I was here last. The focus, a lot of attention directed, directed to the chief and the union negotiations. Uh, I can't report anything on either one of them. So that'll, uh, I'll take care of that. The only other little item I have here is, I did get, requested this for some time, a call summary, which you guys all have a copy of. The church's part of a call summary shows, uh, you know, when the, when the calls were, but there were four, uh, total call time, you know, time to get the call out, time, drive time. And, and not gonna spend any time on it to see what Jared and I have been talking about a little bit. And just, you know, maybe we ought to talk a little bit, but I, it seems to me that, that, you know, by and large, we really shouldn't have drive times more than about five minutes for calls in Villa Park. I mean, you can't get more than a mile and a half. And it's also seems to me, getting the call out within five minutes, just putting it out once they get it, it shouldn't take more than five minutes to transmit it to the car. So I'm gonna kind of work with Jared, see what we can do to, to work this out, because I have a feeling without a whole lot of effort, as few calls as we have, some of these are a couple a day, uh, you know, we should be able to have some incredible response times that we can wave around and, uh, and, uh, keep everybody happy. And people in Villa Park call, boom, they got police there right away regardless of what the event is. So with that, unless someone else, we have staff have anything they feel they want to talk about?
The, it was previously discussed this evening, the environmental impact report on, for the airport was released, actually, my understanding is it was actually released today. The, I think the county has opted to operate under the extended public comment period, which is forty-five days. And so I believe that the last date of comment is gonna be July eighth, just for the council's knowledge.
Okay.
Are you suggesting, then, that we not participate in the public comment or, and just do an official, um, response?
No, 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 I'm not suggesting at all. I feel you should participate as you feel is appropriate. I was just letting you know that, uh, the public comment period, so that if the city wanted to provide a public comment.
It was mentioned Villa Park did not respond.
Right.
You know, frankly, I think we should send them a letter indicating that we don't want the traffic rerouted over Villa Park, however we can most actively word that. Obviously, our people are not gonna want it.
I'll have to take a look at the report. My time here with Villa Park, I've maybe received a handful of complaints in regards to, uh, air traffic. Uh, but we'll, we'll take a look at it, make sure that we're not impacted.
It has changed. It has absolutely changed for sure lately.
Yeah, no, they're absolutely right. They do cut corners. Uh, there's no doubt.
All right. Well, with that, we'll close the meeting in remembrance of our former mayor and councilman Bill McEloney. See you all next month.